December 4th, 2019, meeting at 6:05 PM. Is there any public participation for this conference meeting? Any public participation?
Oh my God, we have a new angle.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from our October 24th, 2019 regular session?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Can I also have a motion to approve and hold the executive session minutes from our October 24th, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So Jim has just given the signal to his students to come in from the auditorium area. They're going to put on a brief little bit of their Frozen play, Frozen Junior. And this is always a highlight of being on school committees, getting a little bit of entertainment behind this. So we'll just give Jim and his teachers time to bring the students in for us.
So Frozen, for those of you who don't know, is next weekend, that's upcoming weekend, the following weekend. So I highly recommend it. I've never been to a musical play I have absolutely loved. The drama coach is Carol Beck, our nurse at the middle school, who is actually retiring at the end of this year, but has promised to stay on as their drama coach.
Ooh, well done. Try to get out and they suck her back in, huh?
Yeah, no, we don't let anybody go.
You see them, Jake, they're coming.
Yep.
The floor is yours, Jen.
Well, thanks, everybody. So we have our production of Frozen Junior that's coming up on Saturday, the 14th, at 7 o'clock. And Sunday, the 15th, at 2. And we have some wonderful actors that are coming in here tonight to kind of display some of their talents. Very excited about that. Mr. Murphy?
You guys can fill in that. Once you fill out that area, look down this way.
I want to tell Jake to move over.
Feel free to come around this area here if you want.
Oh gosh.
No, you can come right here if you want. Kind of loop around us, make a big group, all right?
Is it going to be gone? We're psyched. Is there a kitchen trip to Paris?
Unless you direct us.
New cabinets? Right before Christmas, great idea. Wow. Should we sing too?
So we have our wonderful advisor, who's also our nurse here, Nurse Beck.
Thank you. Hi, I'd like to say thank you very much for inviting us. For a quick peek at our upcoming show, Frozen. Dave always helps me out with this. The Rising Stars Drama Club has been here since 2004 and we've done...
Oh, 45 shows.
45 shows in that time. And Frozen is this year's and is coming next weekend, the 14th and 15th. And we'll be here Saturday night at 7 and Sunday afternoon at 2. And you can email Dave or I or Mr. Dupill and we can find you tickets for sure. I love this show for many reasons, but one of the reasons I love it for this year is we talk about letting go. And there's a lot of letting go. And in that letting go, we find love and light. And since the season of love and light is coming upon us, it's a great show to have at this time. And we thank our superintendent for always being so supportive of us in the program. And Mr. Dupill, so supportive of us all the time. So we're going to give you just a little glimpse. And we've been rehearsing since 2 o'clock, so we're ready. We're ready, so a little quick glimpse coming up.
All right.
There's so much I want to say. Say it all, beginning with today. It's like a dream I thought could never be awesome. You're free. Let it go, let it go. Show us what you can do. Let it go, let it go.
Two parties facilitate and come to a resolution. So that the mediator hears what the two parties are looking to achieve, tries to see if we can come up with an agreement. Sometimes we can, and in the event that we cannot, the next step might be a hearing. So that's...
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you take off, Break the Leg next week, obviously. And thank you so much. We always look forward to seeing the students. We have these long meetings a couple times a month and we never really get to see the fruit of our labors. And it's lovely to see the parents. Thank you for bringing your children here tonight to let us see what's happening. And thank you, kids, for sharing your talent and your magic with us. We really hope your production's amazing.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you all, come on. Have fun, guys. I was going to say, Break the Leg, you should just be...
Who are the little ones? I wouldn't need another little one. They're too old.
I live there every day if you ever want to.
I lived here for two years.
I know you did.
How was it? I kept telling my son that drama's the place to go. Did he call? Yeah? He was like that.
So Point of Border, I would appreciate the motion to take Out of Border, our food service director, Megan's here tonight to speak with us. Can I have a motion to take the item out of order?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Megan Solia.
Oh, God.
The president was set last spring and it's...
Oh, wow.
Are you going to present next month too?
What do you got?
Brownies, cookies.
So we have...
Is it healthy?
Mango salsa. So this is one of the new things that we tried this year. We had fish tacos, so it's North Coast seafood, Acadian red fish, locally caught, sustainable seafood. And to try to entice kids, make it a little bit nicer meal, we served it with mango salsa. So we did some taste tests with the kids in the middle school, the high school. Went over okay. But I think it's probably a little bit more of an adult taste, but I figured I'd still bring some samples here. I'll manage like this. Handels.
I used to manage the red fish fishery.
Just mangoes, red onions, I think it's...
Looks like a... Red fish.
Washed down my cookie. Thank you.
Did you say there was cilantro?
Yes.
Your favorite? Love it.
Thank you very much.
While everybody's grabbing, I just wanted to mention, I mentioned Carol Beck is our middle school nurse. Dave Murphy, for those of you who don't know, whenever you get Parents Square, you will see the name David.
Dave Murphy?
The David Murphy that you've just met. So David Murphy is our student information management... What could we just change his title to? Something like that. He runs, he's the one who takes care of all the data that has to go to the states for us. He's responsible for Power Pool. He is my personal lifesaver when I have to send out snowballs at 5:00 AM in the morning. As I have told him, I have been his job security. He is always needed when I'm in charge. Because 5:00 in the morning, he never gets into work. So David is phenomenal and I must say, he is pleasant whether it's 4:00 AM, 5:00 AM, or 6:00 AM helping me to make calls. So he's a great guy, he's very talented, he's very helpful and into drama. He works for, helps with both middle school and high school with drama. So that is the name you see when you get Parents Square, you see David Murphy at the top. That would be him.
It's nice to know it existed.
He's a real person, yep. It was really funny because I had a couple of parents say to me, who's this David Murphy guy anyway? That would be him. It makes us sad.
That was tasty.
So thank you for having me. So this is just kind of a little follow-up to the presentation I did in the spring to let you know how we did, how we ended up with last year and what this year is looking like. So basically, so a recap of last year, which was my first year here. A reorganized labor a little bit to be more in line with industry standards of meals per labor hour to reduce the over-stacking that we had a little bit up here. The technology we had, our point-of-sale systems, was probably seven or eight years old at least. Some of the PIM pads we had were from 2005, I think. So I bought a couple of new PIM pads, some new technology. So that was about a little over $8,600. We reopened the fourth cash register at the high school, so called Snack Shack. So giving the kids a little option to have a little bit more ala carte things without having to stand in line. We started breakfast here at the middle school back in March. So that's gone, that's gone over pretty good. Again, the teachers had really good feedback that they saw improvements in the students' behavior and focus in the classrooms. And at the end of the year, we ended with a profit of $24,890. So, and that included, so one thing to note is a lot of times we have, for each meal that we sell that meets the USDA meal pattern, we get reimbursements from USDA. So last, so FY '19 included June, FY '18's reimbursement, and that was about $12,500. So, and it also included June of FY, June of '19's reimbursement. So that was about $5,000. June of '18 had 15 days where we had a lot of snow days that year. Last year, we only had eight days in June, so that's why there's that big difference. But just to kind of keep that in mind, that had both Junes income in that year. So that brings us to this year. So that... So right as of right now, this year isn't looking as good as last year. I'm predicting we'll end with a negative balance. So that's due to approximately $8,000, 8% increase in the cost of foods. So like the pizza that we buy, chicken patties that we buy, even the snacks that we buy have all gone up about 8%. One of the main factors in that is probably only one grocery vendor bid on us in the collaborative that we're in. I checked with another collaborative, they also had the same, the same reference where only one grocery vendor bid on them. Costa, one of our main grocery vendors, got out of the school business. So I know, you know, the leaders of the club are looking to try to get more vendors to bid on us to get more competitive pricing. So, and then also, there has been a slight decrease in participation. And so with those increases in costs and decrease in participation, I'm guessing that we'll end with about $10,000 to $15,000 loss. And again, I haven't really changed anything on the menus compared to last year. So I'm not 100% certain why the decrease compared to last year, but we're looking into it. So that brings us to what's being done to reverse this and try to stem that, stem the loss that we'll have. So starting in January, we're going to start a breakfast program at the high school. So Mrs. Smith is the school librarian at the high school, who's super enthusiastic, really, she's just awesome. I can't say enough. I just met her because I asked her if she'd help out with the PSA. And she's already, she wrote two PSAs this morning, they filmed them. So they're going to air at the high school last week in December, probably a couple of times during the first week, first couple of weeks of January as well, so we can kind of get that going, get the kids excited. And the kids that were there today were so enthusiastic. So that was, I'm really hoping that that carries over to the actual breakfast program as well. So we're going to have announcements. We're going to do some taste tests in the cap in the library. There's a lot of kids gathering in the library in the morning. So I'll try to entice them to stop at the cap before they head down to the library. So last year, I had changed to a little bit more expensive chicken patty. I think that this year, I'm going to have to change back to the less expensive one, just to kind of keep the costs in line. And we changed the way we served the chicken patties, so they weren't served on the line, they were just served at a grab-and-go station. I think we're going to serve them back on the line and the grab-and-go so they can have more opportunities to grab the chicken patties because they're our popular item at the high school. Then again, I'm going to continue to work with managers to get input on what they think are the popular items that the kids have. But while still trying to maintain, you know, introducing foods and being in compliance with USDA regulations. Because again, I think it's, the cafeteria should be the continuation of the classroom where we're teaching kids and lollyfing for kids what good nutritious choices are. So although some of the more popular items are some of the standard chicken nuggets, pizzas, the chicken patty, I still like to have things like the mango salsa we just had and the fish tacos so the kids can be exposed to different things as well. So even though those things cost a little bit more money, you're trying to balance those out with some of the less expensive ones as well. So I'm going to revisit the commodity worksheet. In fact, I predict in, I think it was March, what we're going to purchase for this entire year. So I'm going to go back and revisit that because we had a lot more burgers left, so I'm going to transfer those, get some more vegetables, so you can get some more vegetables, spend a little bit less money from our budget on veggies. And see if I can do a survey of the, maybe utilize some kid's skills and see if we can do something, have a survey of the middle school and high school students to see what do they like? What do they want to see more of? What do they want to see less of? Anything new that they'd like us to try to offer. Couple of ala carte offerings at the middle school to bring in more revenue. And then looking into maybe doing some kind of social media account or maybe doing a lot of Parents Square. And I don't know, I haven't really gotten into Parents Square. I don't want to inundate parents with messages and things like that that aren't really urgent, that they need to attend to. But maybe occasionally, you know, have to figure out and talk to Dave and enjoy and figure out what's an appropriate use to say, can we send out some pictures to show? Like this is the fish taco picture that you have that you see up there with the mango salsa, some fresh peaches and corn and bean salad. So then also, eventually I want to get the recipes entered into Nutricid, which will be useful for parents to utilize that for nutrition information, or carmen info, for students to have access to that. We need that allergy information. And some of those websites also have the ability to, again, put more pictures in and make real-time changes. So we have situations like we had this week where there's a snow day, we had some food thawed that we can't, you know, serve that way. We need to change the menu so that that food doesn't go to waste. We can know if the parents have this menu change is happening, so the kids don't come to school and get disappointed. Luckily, this week, we were able to keep the menu the same, but then we utilized the food that we had ready for Tuesday. So we didn't have any lost days, so that was good. So that's just a little bit what we're, I'm going to continue to work on making sure that we, hopefully, we can break even. Or at least, even if we don't break even, not lose too much. So, and that's, now it's questions. And that's just a picture of the Buffalo Kilo's own meal that we had a while ago. And one thing to note too is they do show the Styrofoam trays, but most of the schools, like Bennett uses compo school trays, high school and middle school, middle school uses all reusable trays, high school uses about half and half, reusable and disposable. I'm looking into purchasing more reusable. Again, kind of maybe costs more money, but again, to save more money down the road from purchasing over and over disposables. But this is on a disposable because that's how I eat my lunch and they save it for later because I don't eat it till after the kids are done. So I eat it. And that's the benefits of the microwave. So that's a little short presentation on where we were last year, what this year's looking like. So again, just wanted to give you a feeling on where we stand and see if anyone has some questions.
So we were all thoroughly impressed with your presentation back in the spring. And to end the year with the surplus that you did was fantastic. Just to let you know, we also are struggling with trying to find more than one company to address our bids. Transportation, the school buses, is an area where we find one company coming to us and then we're stuck with that increase. So the 8% increase that you're seeing, we absolutely don't hold that against you. We understand that's the cards you were dealt and you're doing the best you can with it. The ideas you're coming up with to try and address that are also in reasonable. And I hope it gets you closer to zero or less of a hole than you're predicting, but I appreciate your efforts.
If I may, Jake is our student representative and he is on the high school student council. I don't know if Jake has any thoughts that you'd like to share?
Yeah, so I'm also part of the Ally Health Club and we're doing a nutrition right now for the Massachusetts Health Board. And one of the things that we're trying to do is, you know, get information about all nutrition to the students. A lot of our club was there today helping to film the PSA that we made. And it's something that we're trying to push, something we wanted to do. So I think breakfast in the morning is a fabulous idea. I think it will change a lot.
My thanks, Jake.
I have a question. So, and this is getting into the weeds and the details of what you're offering. But do you, or have you thought of doing like smoothies or shakes? Because I know like in my house, with four kids running in every which direction, they do a lot of that. And some for protein for, you know, strength training, but some just smoothies with just some average protein, like banana, strawberry, a little bit of protein or something. I know that it can be expensive to make, but I'm just wondering if you've thought of that.
We do smoothies every day at the middle school and grade school. So we use them with low-fat vanilla yogurt, frozen fruit, so it's commodity fruit. And sometimes we have bananas, especially if they're, it's a good way to utilize bananas since they tend to be like ripe one day and they come in the next morning and round. So we utilize the bananas and so even chocolate milk to make chocolate banana smoothies, parfaits. So they are a pretty popular lunch option at the high school and here at the middle school as well. And I'm hoping to utilize some parfaits for breakfast options too. And we offer those, the yogurt counts as the protein part of the meal. We offer it with a two-ounce whole grain pretzel. They can take fruits and veggies and another milk with them. And it's an awful lot if you take another milk, but that comes with a meal as well.
I thought the idea of a social media account, I think that would be great. One of the things I noticed, you know, as the kids have gotten older is, you know, in elementary school, they bring home the lunch menu and you put it on the board. And then like in middle school, like sometimes I would print the lunch menu because it's online as a PDF file. And now, you know, if we want to see what's for lunch, like, you know, we use the phone. And, you know, bringing up the PDF on the phone and zooming in, seeing what's today. You know, I think it makes it a little harder to know, you know, what's for lunch that day. You know, unless we go ahead and print it out, which we could do. But I think, you know, the way that the kids operate, you know, they want to be able to like check Twitter or check Instagram or whatever it is to find out what is for lunch. And, you know, so I think that, you know, with a different way of communicating what's for lunch, that might, that might help, you know, kids buy when they see something they really are going to like.
I think one of the, there's a bunch of different technology companies that are out there that import data directly from our menu planning system. So once I upload the, a lot of our recipes, so that's kind of the task in itself, that's the first part, to upload all of them in there. But that, a lot of them have apps that you can actually go on their phone. So you can go on that menu app and then you can see what's for lunch. And you can actually like rate it 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 stars, leave comments, you know, check the nutrition information and all that stuff. So it's just a matter of finding the time to get those recipes in. So that's, I think, at the very least, that might be a summer project for me to do. So that's kind of what I'm hoping to do. But yeah, thank you for that feedback and that's what I'm hoping kids will utilize that.
Will you be able to use the same labor that you have currently for the breakfast at the high school? Or will you have to increase costs there too?
We are going to do something similar like that we did to the middle school. So essentially taking one of our employees, shifting them a half hour earlier. So it'll be the same labor hours, the labor won't increase.
So you'll just have more ability to do sales with the same?
Exactly. Yep, so we're just going to have to make sure that they're going to be able to get everything done, you know, cleaned up with a half-hour labor, less of that at the end, but I'm confident that we can do that.
I think it's, I always think it's wonderful when anybody who comes to any meeting with a problem comes with a list of potential solutions, so I applaud you. Because oftentimes it's sort of people coming like, here's our problem. But I just love the fact that you came with quite a few thought, well-thought-through ideas. The one that sort of resonated with me the most, at least just from my experience, is to get the school, the students' input. Because I think you have a range of, you know, always users, occasional users, never going to go users. And it's sort of trying to figure out what draws the always users and what draws the occasional users. And then how do you turn those non-users, like my son, who never buys? And he'll say it's because, he only has 22 minutes or something. I don't know how valid that is. But to sort of get feedback from those different sort of user groups to figure out like, why do they or don't they? What do they like? I think that's really key. I know you have a lot of requirements and standards and commodity lists and things that the kids don't understand. They just don't know why you guys can't just serve Chick-fil-A, you know? That being said, it's not healthy. That being said, I think it's, that solution I think is a fabulous one. I would definitely encourage that.
Thank you. Thank you for Mike, and for your help and maybe to reach out to the Ally Health Club and get some ideas. Because again, I'm kind of, I know technology-ish, but I'm not tech savvy. So, you know, any help I can get from you to kind of get that information and draw it, get that information from all those, from all those students would be really helpful. Thank you, Mike, for coming. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having me. The salsa was great. It was great. It was excellent. I'll leave it over there next to the cookies so you can...
I had a cookie first, I should have waited.
So Jim, it's your host and it's your birthday. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Yes.
I tried to send a home, the candle in the mango.
It was so sweet. I was saying to Jason before our last meeting that because we had these meetings that I couldn't make it home. And my daughter and wife had come to see me in my office before our meeting. And then my son came over after his swim practice and came in to see me. So it made my day.
That's nice.
So it was very nice.
If no one minds, when Jim's done with his report, I'd like to be able to let him go home. I heard there might be pizza for dinner tonight.
Yeah, my little girl was trying to convince everybody pizza. Michelle's like, he's not going to be home till nine, we're not going to eat pizza at 9:00 o'clock at night. Right, so first of all, I just want to thank our students for coming and doing Frozen Junior. They do such a wonderful job and Carol Beck really does, is such a phenomenal person and dynamic when it comes to engaging our students in doing these drama productions. And she's a big part of our New York City run that we do. And we went and saw Frozen at Disney's Theater in New York when we went. And she took a lot of her students from the drama club. And it really was just a phenomenal connection. So I want to thank them and I'm really excited about the performance that's coming. Moving on, I'm going to talk about the holiday head start party. So our National Junior Honor Society, which we had inducted last year, has taken on coordinating our holiday head start party. And through their coordination, the head start program, they currently have 175 coming to our building. I know, I'm so excited about that. So December 16th, from 4:00 to 6:30, we are expecting 175 coming. So, December 16th, from 4:00 to 6:30, we are expecting 175 coming. They will be here, they play games. We have food for them in the cafeteria, we do crafts. And then we end with Santa Claus coming in the lobby. I know you really can't see this, but I was putting a little picture to remind myself of how special that moment is. So, when we have 100 little ones running around and excited about Santa, it's such a wonderful night. So, I want to thank all of our honor societies students here. I want to thank your support for our honor society here. And that really should be an exciting event. I will be reading in the library towards the night before Christmas, so that will be my part among serving food and things. So, it is exciting. I'm going to move on to Toys for Tots. So, we have our Jingle Ball Tournament where all participants come and bring toys for Toys for Tots program. It's the local Toys for Tots campaign, the Heart and Soul Marine Toys for Tots program. And our own Scott Evans, who is our wellness teacher, coordinates and helps that campaign and donates the toys. So, that's our Toys for Tots and that's happening this week. We have our Coats for Kids that's starting up December 13th to January 6th. It's when we collect gently-used winter coats. We have a collection box in the main lobby during our winter concerts. And it really helps our donations and through our winter concerts and really helps and supports. And Anton Cleaners, I want to make mention that they take the coats and they clean them and have them ready for when the cold months are. So, I want to thank Vicki Wright and the peer leaders for their support. I want to thank our communities for their support. Really is a wonderful program that they do. I also want to make mention of our Giving Tree, which Nurse Beck coordinates. So, we have 50 local families from our own school that Nurse Beck coordinates donations for and donates to those families. So, that's another wonderful thing that Nurse Beck does. We had just finished our food drive. 756 items were donated to the Plymouth Area Coalition Food Bank in Kingston. So, thank you to our families and thank you to our students. Since I've mentioned our winter concerts, I will say winter concerts are Tuesday, December 17th at 5:30 and 7:00, and Wednesday, December 18th at 7:00. And if you are interested in hearing the holiday favorites from our concert choirs and from our band, please come and attend. It's a great event. We had our Turkey Bowl, which was the Wednesday before Thanksgiving break. And that was out on Syracuse Field this time. It was really a great event. We had popcorn, pizza, hot chocolate, and baked goods for our kids who were in the stands. We had a staff versus students game out on the field. Our new SLO came and participated on the field. He actually caught a touchdown. I want to thank Joy for coming to the event. Joy has come to every single one. Last year she thought I was gonna...
She's hard to pick on the field.
I know. Last year she was like, Jim, I was worried. I was worried about you. So, I go out and actually participate and I'm out there and I'm throwing the football.
You look very better this year.
Yes, she said that. She calls me up later that afternoon, after the game this year. She's like, oh, you look so much better this year on the field. I said, well, I dropped a few pounds, Joy. So, that probably helped me a little bit. It was a great event, really, you know, and they really, the kids like to see you, you know, especially, you know, I don't say, but you're the principal, right? So, if you're out on the field with the kids, they love it. And they're in there and they're saying, oh, we're going to take you down. They're on the mic saying it and it's just so much fun. And the kids were so wonderful. It was just such a fun event. So, I do want to thank everybody for helping and supporting our student council, our peer leaders. I do always like to have Joy there. I see, I saw her in the stands too, like going down the field. I don't know if I was, I think I was playing on the field at the time and I saw her up there. So, it's nice and it's a nice event. So, and we do that on our shortened day where we get out at 10:30, we go out in the field at like nine something and then we end the day out there and then we bring them back in. And it's a feel-good team-building activity. Switching over to athletic events, we have our middle school basketball tryouts for this week. So, those are in the gym. So, those will be happening throughout the week. Do you want to also do a Kennedy Space Center update? So, we're looking at May date for a Kennedy Space Center event. We've already been in contact with Kennedy Space Center and coordinating lunch with an astronaut for our kids. So, we're going to be two days down at Kennedy Space Center. And they're also going to look at doing an anti-gravity training. So, they have an astronaut, two astronaut training exercises down there. One's an anti-gravity training and one's a Mars rover training that they'll actually be able to participate in. And then we're looking at booking the early space Apollo mission launch site expedition where we get to actually walk on the launch site where the Apollo missions took place. And so, we're very excited about some of those events. I mean, our kids have always come back the last few years. And again, we thank you for your support. So, that's the update on that. We're hoping to pass that information out before Christmas break. And that will give families, you know, some time to look at it and then we get to spread out some of the payments for going down there. So, that would be in May. And again, so we're looking at two days in Kennedy and then we look at one or two days at Universal Studios. So, that's what we're looking at. And a second out of state, which this one, this will be the first time I'm talking about this, so I will need a vote, is the Lint Chocolate Factory in Stratham, New Hampshire. It's our tech engineering teacher, Mrs. Walker, is interested in taking the Project Lead the Way Automation and Robotics classes to see the actual manufacturing production facility. She has a friend who's an engineer in Lint and they have all levels of automation in this factory from single-loop control to full-scale robotics. And kids can go into groups, go through. And they said they have a full range of engineers there as well to help and explain the automation and robotics that are going on in the factory. And they're looking for permission because it's out of state, because it's in Stratham, New Hampshire.
Can I have a motion? Any motion that would be improved the out-of-state field trip to the Lint Chocolate Factory? And can I add that the school committee should be...
Invited. And the superintendent should be invited.
There may be some samples that might get lost if we send Joy. The samples might not make it back. I'll second that.
So, Eric made the motion to allow the field trip to the Lint Chocolate Factory in New Hampshire. Gordon seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Gordon seconded.
All those in favor? Either of you unanimous support for the field trip?
Thank you. We've got plenty of chaperones. I will let Mrs. Walker know that we have some chaperones that might be interested or at least some candies coming back their way. Program of studies changes, so I have submitted that for your review. This will be your first read, so I won't talk about it tonight, but it's really just for you guys to read at your leisure and come back with questions next time. And that's it. The mainstay of those, of some of those changes is the social studies curriculum changes that have happened through the Massachusetts State Curriculum Frameworks have switched them to eighth grade, so that's why you're looking at that. But it's all in there and feel free next time to ask me questions.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
All those in favor of letting Jim go home? Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Chris voted me down. He told me to stay. His hand didn't go up. I gotta stay. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it. The only thing I am a little concerned about is that I have their presentations up on that computer.
Oh, that's a good point.
Who's presentations?
We can handle it.
Marie and Michaela.
I can be a Vanna.
We can handle it.
Jake, how are you with technology, my buddy?
Jake needs to leave because his class is in the play at 7:00. Quick, go look.
I'll do it.
Can you put Michaela's up?
Yep.
I'm doing Michaela next.
Yep.
Do you want me to stick through Michaela's anyway, Joy, or am I...
No, go home.
Would that make it easier for you?
Just go.
I think between all the adults in the room, we can figure it out. Someone's got to be. So, Michaela is not here this evening because her daughter is in the woods. So, she...
Who's the name of it? Into the woods. In the play, into the woods.
I started out deep into the woods, so I have everything but the right title. Her daughter Addie, it says into the woods. So, she needed to get her ready and to see who I'm going to be. So, she's in the first part of the play. So, I told her I thought I could handle her presentation tonight for her. So, hopefully you can put up with me to do that, please. So, Michaela sent out proposed changes to the program of studies. Last year, there had been some questions about how we went about making the changes. So, she sent it out ahead this time so you have an opportunity to read it. And then what she also did, which is new for us, is she asked the department chairs to give a very brief presentation on the course changes. So, we actually have a little video from each of the departments explaining the changes that are in your packets. Thank you, Gordon. You're doing a fine job. Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
Does Gordon know how to find Marie if we need to?
I showed him, yep.
My name is Melissa Fontaine and I'm the social studies department chairperson at the high school. The changes to the program of studies for the 2020-21 school year are a reflection of the release of the 2018 Massachusetts Curriculum Frameworks for History and Social Sciences. The state has charged all school districts with implementing the new framework starting next school year. Over the past two years, members of my department have been hard at work to renew the standards. They met as part of a district-wide implementation team that developed an action plan and they've developed new curriculum maps for World History, United States History I, and United States History II. They're also in the process of writing new understanding by design curriculum units. The changes we are proposing to the course descriptions and the program of studies are a direct result of the work we've done behind the new state frameworks. Some highlights to the changes include new units in World History, including Foundations of World History and the Process of Globalization. In United States History I, the scope of the course will extend to World War I, where United States History will pick up and continue through the 21st century. In ESS, we are including civic engagement project in accordance with Massachusetts General Law 29, Chapter 296, which requires students in each upper high school to complete one student-led, nonpartisan civic project. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kelly Pasqua. I'm a department chair for some of the value practical arts. I am speaking for both the music department and the art department, which both have some small changes to the program of studies for the upcoming school year. In the music department, we have one new proposal for a new course. That course is called Modern Band. It is basically a contemporary band, a rock band type style with guitars, bass, drums, percussion, vocalists, trying to offer a broader student population musical ensemble experience. And this trend is happening across the country. The National Association for Music Education has been embracing more modern types of music, including programs in elementary schools and Modern Band at the high school level to engage a broader student population. There are two other smaller changes in the music department. One is a combination of two courses we've been running for a while. We've been running a course called Intro to Guitar. That's an introductory level for students that have had no background or experience that could take guitar that I've never played before. And we have a survey course called History of American Popular Music, which is an elective for students who want to learn about music but not necessarily make music. And our proposal is to combine those two courses. So, it still continues to be a survey course about the history and the evolution of American popular music, but through the lens of the guitar and learning basic guitar patterns, as they study the tradition of rock music during the 50s, 60s, and 70s. The third change in the music department, a very small change, is just a name change of a class that we've been running, guitar reading and notation. We'd like to call it Guitar Workshop, thinking that might be more appealing to students. So, my junior high school art department has a few other changes and one new course proposal for the upcoming school year. The new course that we are proposing is called Illustration and Graphic Design. We have some of our students going into art and design majors in college and we are not providing, have not been providing them enough of a digital background in digital media. And so, it's come as a request from the students. And we do have the technology with the added Wacom tablets and the final practical arts laptops to be able to offer another digital course in our programming. So, we are excited about this elective and I think it will fit a need that many students are eager for in illustration, animation, graphic design. The other changes in the department are all small. The name change is only me. We would like to add the names for Portfolio Prep to include Studio Art III, Portfolio Prep, and Studio Art IV, Art Major. Currently, those classes are just called Portfolio Prep and Art Major. And we'd like to encourage the students to take Studio Art I, Studio Art II, Studio Art III, Portfolio Preparation, Studio Art IV, Art Major. So, it's just a name change. The final change in the art department is a change in some of the grade levels that are allowed to take each elective. We are limiting some of our elective courses to students in grades 11 and 12 so that our 10 grade students will stay in the studio art track as opposed to taking electives. And same elective choices for grades 11 and 12 in the art department.
Hi, my name is Puppie Himes and I'm the form language department chairperson here at Silver Lake. We will be changing the name of our department to the Word Language Department. This is because of the big changes that have taken place at the state level. This is since last year's inaugural year of the State Seal of I-Literacy in Massachusetts. And here at Silver Lake, we are very excited to be able to offer five seals of I-Literacy to graduating seniors last year. Now, we're on a mission to spread this throughout the state so other schools will be involved. I was selected to serve as a review panelist for the new foreign language curriculum frameworks. So, this is a really exciting time for foreign languages, which are now Word Languages. And I look forward to sharing in the future all the changes that are coming in our department. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kevin Silver, the coordinator of math and computer science here at Silver Lake. And I'm going to talk to about four changes to the program of studies that I'm proposing for next year. The first one is we want to offer a senior course called Business and Money Management. We want it to be unlevelled and our hopes would be to get students from a variety of levels in that course. The rationale for it is that we really think that more students should take a finance course before they graduate high school. And we have a one-semester elective that we want to keep, but we also want to offer a full-year course. And this one will also tailor a little bit more towards the business end as well as the personal finance. A second proposed change is we want to drop the Adobe Photoshop course from the computer science electives. It's a one-semester elective. And our rationale there is that there is already some overlap with offerings in the art department. And we feel that Adobe is sort of a specialized program that students don't have access to at home. So, we would rather maybe put some of the elements of Adobe Photoshop into our one-semester elective that's, we're keeping called Computer Applications. Another rationale is we never want to get more students taking computer programming courses and we have a variety of those. So, our hopes would be that maybe some students would try a programming elective instead of Adobe. Two other very short changes. We want to change the prerequisite for our College Prep I Algebra II course. Currently, it says that students must have a C minus or better coming out of College Prep I Geometry. We'd like to soften that and say that even if a student has a D coming out of College Prep I Geometry, if they choose to, they can continue on in the College Prep I sequence taking Algebra II. We feel that Algebra I is more of a reflection of how they're going to do in Algebra II than the geometry. And finally, we want to just propose a name change for our current Math and Finance course. It's a one-semester College Prep I elective. We'd like to call it Personal Finance. We feel that that may more accurately reflect the course content. Thank you.
Greetings from the AMLE department. I'm Nicole Francis, the coordinator. We have three proposals for semester electives aimed at deepening our students' creative outlet and experience. The first is Creative Writing II. We currently have a popular elective, Creative Writing I, where we have a group of students who really thrive on that experience. So, this would be the next level elective for that course. It is workshop-based, providing opportunities to define the learning process in the art of constructive criticism. It would offer publishing opportunities. Students could create podcasts, content for Laker TV and the Silver Spectrum Literary Magazine. Our second semester elective would be Poetry, Mystery, and Magnet. This would help to deepen the students' experience in poetry beyond the core curriculum with a focus on analyzing and writing a range of works and styles. It also would be workshop and seminar-based and would also offer performance opportunities ranging from the National Poetry Out Loud competition to poetry podcasts and again, content for Laker TV and the Silver Spectrum website. Finally, to deepen the creative experience, laughter and expression. Here, we would be analyzing the styles of humor writing from short stories, memoirs, papers, cartoons, from both historical and current sources. Also workshop-based and students could create podcasts and content for Laker TV and the Silver Spectrum website. So, we think any of these electives would help deepen creative opportunities in the English classrooms. Thank you for your support.
That was one of the richest presentations I've ever experienced as a school committee member. It's going to take me a long time to digest it, but I loved, I loved how that was done.
And it's nice for us to see, you know, I mean, I think, you know, not everyone necessarily even knows who the department is.
Right.
You know, you know the name, you might not know the face, so it's nice for all of us to kind of see.
I was thrilled when Michaela mentioned she was doing this, and it came out of some questions from Lesley, yeah, actually. Wasn't sure about some of the changes and wanted some additional information. So, we used to have, three years ago, on the agenda, a curriculum coordinator, that we would have a department head or a curriculum coordinator or somebody come in every month and present information about their.
I'm longer than you.
All right, well, I'm old. But it was, I thought it was awesome.
I agree.
I really did. Actually, back when Casey Hanson was there.
Six years.
Oh, old man. And it was, it was something I really looked forward to, because I think so often, and it's part of the reason that I really am so sad sometimes, you drown in the paperwork and the decisions that we all have to make, but we need to see Jake, so we need the young man to sit over there. You know, the kids and why we're here, so, you know, and the department heads and the coordinators were able to bring some of that in for us. So, I don't know how sometimes to fit off all the additions into the agenda, and that's where it fell off, but I did personally think it was wonderful. But, you know, maybe trying to periodically do something like this is a great way of doing it, where they don't have to come at night and we have the technology to do that. So, I mean, you got to see across the board everybody, and it was, I thought it was great.
And super efficient, too.
And it was nine minutes.
Yeah.
This is an excellent presentation.
And give a lot of credit to the curriculum coordinators for themselves out there as well, you know, sitting in front of the camera knowing that anybody could be watching.
Yeah.
I appreciate that as well.
I just have a quick question. Mitchell has mentioned the Silver Spectrum, but I'm not sure what that is.
It is the newspaper that they do.
Okay, and that's online?
Ooh, I believe it is.
She said something about the website.
Yeah, yeah, I believe it is.
And we've had.
We have my copy. I believe it is posted online. Sorry, I haven't, can't, I haven't looked, but I can imagine reading it. I can get a copy for you.
No, I'll, I'll.
It's online?
Okay.
If you don't find it, send me an email, I'll get you up.
I think that was fabulous. I would really encourage that in as many different facets of what we do as possible. To Laura's point, it's great to see the actual staff talking to us about some of their changes, and clearly they're carrying the water for other people who work for them or work with them, which is great. And I'm sorry, Lisa, I sent you a lot of the questions on this that.
That's okay.
That Michaela sent back answers to, which I think was great. And I did not mean to spark this, but this is great, so I guess squeaky wheel gets that, which is great.
Yeah, I just didn't know how to answer them, so that's why.
No, that's fantastic.
I deferred to the person who submitted the forms.
And to be honest, I'm just trying to be respectful of the chain of command. I don't want to go straight to Michaela, you know, so I'm glad you forwarded, and then I felt fine. I did have a couple of questions, Joy, on this.
Sure.
One is just more process-oriented, and I note that in Jim's, if he had left, not left, which is fine, I get it, I would have asked a similar question, because this is in a slightly different format, at least on paper. But in hers, which I really liked, the high schools, they have signature pages, which I think are fantastic. You know, the following signatures are required in the case these individuals have been reviewed this proposal, and it goes building level, district level, school committee level, and I really like that fact, but they're all blank.
They weren't filled out yet, again, because we're bringing it forward.
So, this is the first read, and then we.
Yep.
Okay, so at what point do we ask you questions about anything in particular?
I would suggest when Michaela's here. The idea was that she put the presentation together.
Yeah.
This is for you to read through, put together any questions you have, and then next month, you can ask her any questions or shoot her an email.
Okay, I'll do that.
But that's.
I just have one question on, on one course.
Okay. We've always used a different format for the high schools and the middle school.
Yeah.
So, the high school has a monthly cabinet meeting. Jill attends. Jill would be the one signing off, generally the assistant superintendent of this curriculum.
Yeah.
That's always the way it's been here. And we will go through that process. At the middle school, the changes aren't as dramatic or as impactful as they are at the high school. At the high school, it's, you know, it's the transcript that they're looking for for college, it's, you know, it has a greater meaning. At the middle school, it tends to be more wordsmithing or more about snap ability.
Sure.
And timing. So, it's, you know, budget-wise, I mean, sometimes we've had to cut a position, so obviously those courses sort of go away, but it doesn't, the process is very different.
Yeah, okay. I'll ask her my question.
Sure.
So, do we vote on these next time?
No, next month.
So, if we have any major issues that aren't resolved next time when you ask your question.
Yes.
We could hold the vote.
Okay.
We wouldn't necessarily have to commit to anything that we're not going to do.
Okay, great, thanks.
Absolutely. Any other questions before we move on? All right, fantastic. So, where would you like to go?
I would like to finish Michaela's presentation, if that's okay?
Yeah.
So, there was a member of our community who donated a piano to the Music Department, and apparently there's a letter in the handout, I'm not sure if you noticed that, putting for a note series, but I'm not sure I saw it. And she will send a thank you note. I don't remember.
It was in an email.
It was in the email, okay. And so, we just need a vote to accept the donation of the piano.
Vote to accept.
The donation of the piano with our hands.
Second. All those are there. All right, that's everybody. Thank you.
The Into the Woods is premiering tonight, and there will be encore performed to Saturday at 7:00 or Sunday at 2:00. I highly recommend attending if you're at all available. The productions are always absolutely fantastic. I'm astounded at them. Congratulations to our cheer team. They went to the state, and they qualified for the Nationals, which is the first time in school history.
Wow.
So, that is very exciting for us.
That's huge.
And then, lastly, Michaela, got to go to Gillette Stadium, she was very excited. And we were awarded the MIAA Sportsmanship Award for District Sale Passes Around for admin students and coaches, and they were treated to a day at the Gillette Stadium for the Annual Sportsmanship Summit, and the adults were treated to a tour of the Patriots' Hall of Fame, and student leaders participated in workshops, and it was a fabulous experience. And sincere thanks to the MIAA and Craft Organization for their support, and I understand Michaela did lots of Christmas shopping while. She's got a great reputation, so.
That's an amazing recognition, to see that bestowed on all of our students and coaches.
Absolutely, yeah, it was fantastic.
And there were two teams that got the sportsman, the team sportsmanship award too. Football was one, I don't remember what the other one was, but two teams, which is great out of our league.
Field hockey.
What was it?
Field hockey.
Yeah, that's it, field hockey. It's nice to be recognized for sportsmanship.
Absolutely. That's, I think, the most important one.
Agreed.
Thank you.
All right. Is that good for Ms. Gill's report?
That was it for Ms. Gill.
All right, thank you for the high school. Any questions for the high school report? All right, moving to our financial report from Christine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight is financial report light. There isn't all that much to report, neither. We're doing okay. There are a couple of small deficits totaling $4,700 in the whole financial. $4,600 of that is for some curriculum work that had to take place over the summer that was not able to be covered by a grant, but within the categories of being able to absorb those small deficits. That's it for the financial report. I just want to mention the warrant that's being passed around tonight is a little different than our normal warrants, but that is the warrant for the town of Plinton, because they are paying for the middle school resource officer. What they've requested from the town is that the school committee sign off on this, because this is, this is the group that proposed the article. So, once I get this to the town hall, they'll hear the invoices. Thank you very much.
Do you need a signature from a member of each town, or just enough votes?
My criteria is that not only do I need to have more than half, I need to have enough, I need to have each town represented, so I guess we need to decide that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And that's it. Unless there are any questions?
Questions for Christine. Thank you for a wonderful holiday report.
You're welcome.
All right, so, moving on to our special character.
We are.
All right. Welcome, Marie.
Thank you very much for having me tonight.
I'm sure, I'm sure. If anybody wants to move, so, got a good angle, Chris?
Sure.
Joy, thank you again for your assistance.
Thank you, my Vanna. I said earlier, there's going to be a whole generation of kids that doesn't know what it means to have Vanna.
Just hold present up and up the right.
And Gordon has seen the presentation, so he should be able to do the slides.
Where's your glasses for me to stand?
Actually, Gordon, we can give her a presentation. I can answer mine.
So, thank you again for having me. I don't know where.
Aren't those good?
Yeah.
I don't know where to go.
Lisa can.
Next to there.
So, thank you again for having me tonight. This is just an annual review of special education programs and services. So, just to begin, I like to start by just reviewing for you what special education is, and again, it's specially designed instruction to help provide support services for students with disabilities ages 3 through 22, and it is designed to help allow children to have access to curriculum alongside their non-disabled peers. And for a little visual that I shared with you last year, but I just like it so much that I wanted to continue to share it, that there is a very big distinction between looking at equality versus equity. And when we talk about giving students the exact same accommodation, we're not actually giving the students the accommodations that they need. So, if you look at the picture on the right, we're looking at giving the exact same accommodation to all students and giving them the same height of a box, so that they can all see what is going on on the playing field, but the children are of different height. So, given the exact same box height to each individual child, we're not actually providing the service that the individual child requires, because as you can see, the child on the far right, even with the same accommodation of that box, still can't see over into the playing field. If you look to the picture on the right, we're seeing that the differentiation there is giving each child exactly what they need to have the equal access, to have access of the visual field of what was going on in the field. Makes sense? When we look at the actual team process, we're looking at a whole compilation of people that come together to do what is in the best interest of the child with that disability. We're looking at first and foremost, the student. We have our regular education teacher that is the expert in the content. We have our special education teacher that is the expert in breaking down that content so the student with the disability can access. We have the parent, who is the expert of their child. We have school representatives that can commit district resources and funds to whatever the child needs at that time. Community agencies, sometimes we have students that have DMH, DMR, mass rehab, other practitioners that come to the table to support the child. We have the child experts and the evaluation experts, our own team of evaluators, all of them coming together to develop a team that will work to identify what the exact needs are for that child. When we look to see who is eligible for IEP services, the state has given us 10 different categories or classifications that we must first and foremost identify. So, the state asks us to say whether or not a child has one or more of the following disabilities. So, it could be more than one on this list, but the team first and foremost must identify whether or not the child has one or more of these disabilities. That's only step one in the process. Step two, as the next slide shows, is the rest of the decision tree that the team follows. And I know you can't really see this slide, but this is the actual state form that takes you through the eligibility flow chart, and the next slide shows you and breaks down for you what the actual questions are. So, first and foremost, does the child have one or more of the following disabilities? Is the student making effective progress in school? And if they are not, is that lack of progress a result of the student's disability? And if it is, does the student require specially-designed instruction or related service in order to make effective progress in school? So, just because we have identified students having a disability, that doesn't necessarily state that, okay, we're going to develop that IEP or 504. That just is step one in the process. So, these are all of the other steps that our teams go through in order to determine eligibility for the IEP.
Ooh, that came out of California. I don't know if that's because it's on Jim's.
It's fairly close, it just goes crooked.
Oh, you know what? If you download it.
Just make it bigger. Try to make that one bigger.
Gordon, if you download the presentation and then do it, that'll make the difference.
Right, it's a PowerPoint.
You want, you want a printed one?
I have, thank you. I just want to make sure it's something that you folks can read.
It should work if you download it and show it, I think.
It prints right?
Yeah, no, I know, but I suspect that's what it is, because he was using. Go up to the little editing, Gordon, and then select it.
Yeah.
Maybe comment, dig up.
All right.
Down the bottom, there's a little.
See, up the top, down the bottom, see?
Yay. All right, so this is, thank you.
Nice work, everybody.
Round of applause, huh? So, this is the regional profile based on our October 1 data report for students that are receiving special education services, broken down by each community, and then, of course, the total. So, each year when I come and present to you, I like to give you some of the historical data, so you see where we have been and where we currently are. So, for FY '20, there are, as of October 1, 637 students within the region that are receiving services via an IEP. So, you can see each of the different communities. So, for Silver Lake Middle School, High School, 237. Plinton, 53. Kingston, 214. That's K-E-N-K-I, and Halifax, 133.
Is that, do you know the percentages of the total population?
I do.
In each town?
I do.
Is there, you're going to tell me exactly there, but are they one, or is there a vast difference among towns?
There's a slide for it.
Oh, yes. Perfect. Thank you.
So, as I spoke to you earlier about the 10 different classifications that the state has provided to us, this is a breakdown of the students that are found eligible for IEP services based on their disability category. So, you can see, for example, for Silver Lake, that's Middle School, High School, there are 21 students that have been identified under the classification of autism. So, that's how the chart reads. So, if you look all the way down, out of the 10 classifications, you can see the total of 237 students between Middle School and High School, but then you can also see the breakdown between Halifax, Kingston, and Plinton, K-6. Yes?
I'm just looking at the numbers quickly, I'm a numbers person, so. You know, but I'm, but I'm wondering, you know, obviously, when you look at data, there's always context behind it, but, you know, like that, there are certain numbers that seem a little bit out of whack with what you'd expect in terms of totals. So, like Halifax's communication is almost twice as much as Kingston's communication, and yet, you know, Kingston is much larger than Halifax. So, you know, there's obviously a few things in there like that, like do we, do we have sort of an understanding as to why that might be so?
How things are trending per community?
Yeah, does that, does that have to do with sort of how the different buildings operate in terms of the decision-making process, or?
I think that's.
Or is it just really truly a different population?
I think it boils down to being a different population, but it is certainly an intriguing question.
That's just the one that jumped out at me.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm sure.
And I love that you picked up on that. Yeah, I mean, that, it definitely boils down to the different communities. As you can see, for developmental delay, Kingston's 53 compared to Halifax and Plinton. So, I mean, you are going to see different variations based on population, and it is more so because of the population in the community, as it is more so driven by the services and the identifications that are going on in each of the buildings. But that's a great question.
That's a question.
Yeah, sure. Wait a bit, wait a minute. You had your chance.
So, the health?
Health impairment, yes.
Would that also, could that possibly be in there in 504 as well?
This is strictly IEPs, but health impairment captures a whole host of things, but one of the primaries in this classification is ADD and ADHD, falls under health impairment. But this is strictly IEP numbers, not 504s.
And are there certain, there are certain disabilities that are only for certain ages? Is that?
Developmental delay is a classification that the state has allowed us to use up to age nine. And then after that, the team has enough data to really determine what the disability is. Because up to age nine, the state allows us to use developmental delay because we're not quite sure, at such a young age, we're seeing, we could be seeing some global delays. It could be in the area of occupational therapy, fine motor growth, motor speech, cognition, academic achievement. So, because they're so young and we're waiting to see how their skills emerge and develop, the state has allowed us to use the classification of developmental delay only to age nine. And then at that point, we need to identify if they still have a disability and what the other classification could be.
Can I ask a question?
So, that's why we don't have any.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. To follow up on, I'm sorry, Jason, for you, is it okay? Oh, hi, everybody. It's been a while.
Absolutely, go ahead.
To follow up on that, so Marie, does that explain why if I'm looking, if developmental delay is sort of age-based?
Yep.
Does that explain why there's zero under Silver Lake?
Absolutely.
And so, by the time the students have reached a certain age, they've fallen into a different classification?
Yes, yes. As I said, it times out at age nine, age nine. So, there's absolutely no way that a student beyond age of nine, so certainly middle school or high schoolers would have the classification of developmental delay.
Okay.
Yeah, the state doesn't even accept that as a classification.
Okay. I didn't know there was a hard cutoff.
There's a hard cutoff at age nine.
Thank you.
Yep. Next. Once again, McGee?
Thank you. Laurel, sorry. You should have been asked.
See, just, I got it, I got it all for you.
Great. Obviously, she anticipates the question. Done, done this a while.
Again, this is based on the October 1 report. So, I have the school enrollment for Halifax, Kingston, Plimpton, and Silver Lake. And I have the population of students receiving special education services for their IEP, calculated the percentage for each community.
Does the Silver Lake line split out in towns similarly to where they split out at the younger levels?
So, Silver Lake, so are you asking Silver Lake, seven through 12, the percentages of Kingston, Halifax, and Plimpton within?
Mm-hmm.
I will calculate that.
That's okay, I'm just curious.
So, I mean, generally, if you have a disability, as you grow, you may learn the skills to accommodate for yourself. So, you might not necessarily continue to need the IEP. But generally speaking, if you have a disability in written expression, you're always going to have a disability in written expression. It's just a matter of how you've been able to adapt and accommodate for that. In the younger grades, you might need more remedial instruction surrounding that, but as you grow older, you might attain the skills to advocate for yourself and accommodate for yourself. So, we might see fewer students on IEPs. But I guess my point to you is that the breakdown is the breakdown. So, I mean, if you're a Plimpton child with an SLD in reading, that's going to carry you through for the rest of your life. It's just a matter of whether or not you continue to require the specially designed instruction in an IEP.
Yep. Thanks.
So, I've provided for you, and you have it in your handouts, a breakdown per town. So, I'm doing the roadshow. I've done Halifax and Kingston, Plimpton is next. So, each town has a designated slide that shows the breakdown of the placements. So, for example, here Halifax Elementary School for FY '20, there are 88 students within the building that has services provided to them via the IEP. For our integrated preschool, we have 18 little ones from Halifax that are at our preschool program. And we actually have one of our exceptional preschool teachers here with us tonight. This is Judy Rock. We have 11 students from the town of Halifax in our in-district programs, K-6, that are housed between Kingston Elementary and Kingston Intermediate. And we currently have 16 students in out-of-district placements. And please remember, when we're looking at the out-of-district placement students, that is actually K through age 22, okay? Because the funding for the out-of-district placements, the older students, comes back to the towns, all right? So, there is your total, again, 133 students for FY '20 from the town of Halifax.
Marie, I know you've done a lot to bring students back into district. So, and I see, you know, those numbers going down. So, is that, you know, it seems significant, you know, in two years, 10 students difference, you know, is that due, you know, in large part to the efforts to bring students back in district, or is it due to something else?
It is a combination of things. It is a combination of students that are aging out, turning 22 and leaving us. It is students that are graduating at grade 12, getting their diplomas and moving on. It is attributed to the in-district programming that we have created that have allowed us to retain students in district. And I have a slide for you as well.
It's all in here.
So, similar slide for Plimpton, and I can go into as much depth and breadth that you would like for each of these communities. Again, I spend far more time in the Kingston, Plimpton, and Halifax, and this is really just an overview for you folks. But again, I can go into as much detail as you like. So, this is the similar slide for Plimpton. And again, because there are so few students that are out of district, I don't do the follow-up slide that talks more specifically about placement. I find it too identifiable, and I protect our kids. And so, this is the Kingston slide. And again, you can see KE, KI, our integrative preschool, substantially separate programming, our out-of-district students. So, Kingston for FY '20 has 214 between KE and KI in total. And the next slide is the one I'm really happy about. So, when we look at the out-of-district students by town, you've seen in the individual slides that that number has gone down in each of the communities. So, in Halifax, in FY '17, we had 26. In FY '20, we had 16. In Kingston, we had 41. In FY '17, in FY '20, we had 29. So, you can see that we have been able to reduce drastically the number of students that were placed out of district. The total down the bottom, FY '17, in all total, we had 73 students out of district. And as of October 1, 48. So, yes.
I have kind of a harsh question. So, I apologize, but I suppose this is our job. So, this is fantastic from a budgetary perspective and certainly providing the services that we need in the district to be more encompassing. Nobody wants to see a kid have to go somewhere else by any means. But of the 48 that you have, are they all agreed upon in district placements? Or, I'm sorry, are the ones that you reduced, I should say, are they agreed upon in district placements, or are you under mediation by a number of them?
Of the 48 that we currently have out of district, none of them are in mediation.
Are the ones that you?
None of them were mediated.
The ones that are retained in district, are any of those under mediation?
Nope. Nope. No.
But that's fantastic, by the way.
So, what does that mean? So, if, so as I've shared with folks before, an IEP is a contract. It is a contract between the school district and the family, and is a legally binding contract. So, if there is disagreement on the specifics of the contract, then we could go to hearing on that. It is very formal, it's very official, it is up in Malden with an actual judge, and, you know, we go through this process of deliberating whether or not our IEP was reasonably calculated to provide a free and appropriate education for our students. So, a hearing is the most drastic response to a disagreement within that contract. There are different steps along the way should there be a disagreement on the terms and conditions of the contract. One can just have a responsive mediation in which we have a third party from the Department of Education that comes in, sits at the table, has no real interest, I want to say, in the outcome. They're just trying to help the two parties facilitate and come to a resolution. So, that the mediator hears what the two parties are looking to achieve, tries to see if we can come up with an agreement. Sometimes we can, and in the event that we cannot, the next step might be a hearing. So, that's what mediation is.
Chairman Prog, so I'm the only current member sitting at the table today from the district in this who was part of bringing Marie on board. And one of the reasons we hired Marie was because of the work that she'd done in East Bridgewater, creating some in-district programs. And as she was describing how she was creating those programs, it was to make sure we were providing programs that were needed for our children and our population. It wasn't to put a square peg in a round hole. It was really analyze the students we have, and I've watched her do this since she's been there, and created specific programs that Silver Lake, Kingston, Halifax, and Plimpton students really needed. And this is the result of that hard work. So, you know, I've had the long view of the bill since the beginning and the vision that Marie had even before she was a member of our staff. And just to see this, and you have to realize, I also come as former chairman of the board of the collaborative that we sometimes used to send students to, and we felt very comfortable doing that with. But being able to keep our students here in home, getting very specific instruction to meet their individualized needs, and saving money at the same time, it's an unbelievable win-win-win-win situation. And I just, I know these are just numbers, but these are also kids. And these kids, all the families, and the amount of difference that this makes in the lives of so many human beings is remarkable. So, I understand your question, but I also applaud what you've done. It's been very impressive.
And I just appreciate the prerogative. To be honest, that's why I asked the question, is because I think you're misunderstanding why I asked the question. Why I asked the question is because I think it's very important for people to understand that you've been very successful in this district, creating programs that are successful for our students. Having been through your process prior to your coming, it was very different, and I just want to applaud you as well for this progress. This is incredible. And to not have students, parents, and families under mediation to make these numbers go down is a huge accomplishment.
Thank you.
So.
Well said.
So, we have next, Lenny.
Details.
Maybe I should stop. So, this is just a snapshot of the special education tuition and transportation budget for the last several years. I do like to highlight that for you because obviously out-of-district tuitions are very costly and transportation is also very costly. Transportation in particular is something that unfortunately is very hard to control. And we have one primary vendor that we had a shift in management and operations of that vendor a couple of years ago, and it was a little bit rocky over the transition. And they have been able to really hear our concerns and turn things around and have been much better in terms of consumer relations with us as their client. We have had some nice positives from that experience, but there have been times over the last couple of years where they weren't able to safely and securely transport our students, and we've needed to go out to other vendors. And other vendors were of a higher price. So, we had, between FY '19 and '20, there was an inflation between Halifax and Kingston in particular. We had some challenging rides that we needed to secure, we needed to go out to other vendors. But when you do the math, actually, when you look at the tuitions that have gone down, even though transportation has gone up, we're still looking at a decrease in spending between those two line items for FY '19 and '20 between Halifax and Kingston. The next slide shows us how we try to offset some of those tuitions. So, we are very fortunate to have Circuit Breaker, even though we would love to see Circuit Breaker give us more of a reimbursement than they do. Every year, they provide us a foundation amount, and they basically say to us, so for FY '19, the foundation amount was $45,792. Basically, the state is saying to us, you can manage $45,792. Any dollar above that, and we'll work with you. We'll give you a little bit of reimbursement for that. The state gives us a reimbursement for every dollar above that foundation. That varies in percentage rates. It varies from, you know, 65 to 72% on average, but just.
In the area. Some are a lot more. We were definitely.
Have you thought about categorizing?
Yes, we talked about that, too.
Like, if you want to go Park and JPL, it's?
We did talk about that. And we'll be talking more about that as well. And then, but there's benefits to not doing that.
Sure.
Tardiness. So, when you don't have a reserved spot, the kids are there.
To give you some examples, for FY '19, again, the foundation was $45,792. So, for example, for the town of Halifax, by total claim, so what I do is I take all of the students that are placed out of district, look at what their tuitions are, subtract the foundation. If they meet foundation, they're eligible for Circuit Breaker. If they don't, I don't even consider them in the pool. If they meet the foundation amount, and then some, take that, total the claim, so it was 1.5 mil. Take the net claim, which is minus the foundation amount for each of those claims. So, the anticipated reimbursement for Halifax, for example, was $542,000. Does that make sense? I have another slide that shows it even better in terms of how to understand Circuit Breaker, which is the next one. So, this is an actual example of a student of ours that is a residential student, and we know the residential tuitions are extremely pricey. So, the actual tuition for the student is $225,532. We subtract the foundation, $45,792. So, the net claim for this one student is $179,740. With a potential Circuit Breaker reimbursement at 65%, I try to be conservative when I make these claims, the actual impact to the town is $108,000. So, for a student that is residentially placed with a tuition of $225,000, the actual impact to the town is $108,000.
Which is still about 10 times what we spend on a student, per pupil. And just to give some credence to the 65% for Circuit Breaker reimbursement, Christine has seen many years from the state where we've received a variety of numbers for Circuit Breaker. Do you know a range of what you've seen during your career for Circuit Breaker?
I'd say very high 60s to maybe 73, and then occasionally you do get a little more at the end of the year if they didn't need as much for extraordinary relief and there were funds available, you'd get a little bump.
And yours were as low as $60,000, too.
When we had the AARO grants, it was much lower.
Yes.
Like, I would say like 24%.
Yeah.
Only for that snapshot when we had AARO grants.
Right. We've been pretty lucky in the past two fiscal years where we've gotten 75% for Circuit Breaker. But again, those are dollars we're getting for the next fiscal year, dollars we're spending this fiscal year. There is some relief for Circuit Breaker and some definitions in the legislation that was passed at the State House. It's one of the only rays of light for our district out of that bill that really is going to increase funding for low-income districts, districts with high ELO populations. We're not going to see much money coming to Halifax, Plimpton, Kingston, and Silver Lake from the bill up at the State House. But we will see potentially some relief in Circuit Breaker and the definition of special ed transportation as well.
Yes. Thank you. So, other ways to help offset our expenses, we have two entitlement grants. One is $240,000, the other is $262,000. $240,000 is the large one. As you can see, for FY '20, the allocation was $972,000. But as you can also see, it was down every year. So, we have to be mindful of that. So, the way that we have opted to allocate funds from this particular grant is to help offset the salaries of some of the paraprofessionals. So, that is taking some of the burden off of the local budgets in each of the communities. So, for example, you can see Halifax is $169,000. I try to be conservative about this, and I don't spend all of the $169,000 on salaries because I am very mindful of the fact that this keeps going down. And I don't want to leave us in a position where I'm going to you or the superintendent to say my grant can't cover the salaries. We now need to come up with more money in the local budget. So, I analyze this, scrutinize over this every year to make sure that we're being smart in how we are allocating the funds to support the staff. So, I reserve some funding to help offset some of the contract services line item for each of the communities. But that's just a delicate balance that I need to play out.
How does the state calculate how much entitlement money districts get? Is it just based on population purely, or does it have to do with other demographic factors?
Well, at first, it starts with how much money they have to begin with. Well, at first, it starts with how much money they have to begin with. And then, they divide that out based on a multitude of factors. I don't know the exact formula that they use to break that down, but I think it is a combination of socioeconomics and student population. Yeah. Yeah, but the overall bucket that they have in the first place for the entire state is also dwindling. So, I think that's also what we're seeing here. The second grant is the two-sixty-two, which is a much smaller grant comparatively speaking, and it is designed for our preschool-age students, age three to five. But as you can see, just a few short years ago, it was forty-four thousand, and now it's only twenty-six thousand. So, this is a grant that I'm not even sure is going to be around much longer. So, you know, we're using this in a very wise way to help offset some of those other contracted services that we're spending for our preschool-age students. So, I've provided for you, again, an overview of the different types of programs that we have here within the region. We have our developmental learning center programs, and I'm so pleased to say that this is a continuum of programs that we have from age three through age twenty-two. We have an integrated preschool program. We have our developmental learning center at KES that is bursting at the seams. We currently have seventeen students. We have two classrooms for our developmental learning center over KES. We have a program over KIS, and these are the programs that also have students tuitioned in from Plington and Halifax. We have a strong middle school program. We have a high school program, and thank you for the support in the creation of our eighteen-to-twenty-two program. So, this is a very nice continuum from age three through twenty-two. Our structured learning center, our therapeutic learning center, we currently have a program at KIS and at the middle school, similar to the language-based program, also moved for Silver Lake the last couple of years. We have the program at KIS and at the middle school. The next couple of slides just give a, just a visual of where the programs are, so we can just kind of bypass those visuals. So, this is, if Gordon can. I think Jim said he prepped it in the next session. This is very interesting. It's not, he's gonna, he's gonna exit out of that thing.
I can see what I mean.
I'm talking now.
Forty years of research. Tell-
Actually, yes. I think it's just on the web talk.
Do we need to see it?
Can we just listen to it?
I remember.
You can just listen to it.
Because she was just standing on stage.
She was.
Imagine a woman standing on a stage.
Forty years of research.
A wide angle.
Tells us that there are unacceptable adult outcomes, and that we're doing completely the wrong thing. So, what am I talking about? I'm talking about the nationally accepted practice of segregating kids with disabilities in self-contained classes for some or most of their school day. So, now, why is this a problem? Well, think about when you learned how to drive. If you're like me, you started in a parking lot, went to busier streets, eventually getting a license, and at some point, you could, if you wanted, fly to Europe, rent a car, drive on the opposite side of the street, all successfully. Because we've practiced those skills across places and people and settings. So, why on earth is it that we force people to learn in a parking lot and then expect upon graduation to not be shocked that they have to have someone paid to be with them? See, there's no magic in those classrooms. The magic is in the belonging, it's in the relationships, it's in the abundance of the communities. Nothing compares to the education that a person can receive side by side with their peers. I've worked in this business for over twenty-five years, and if there's one thing I know, is that the more complex a career is, the more I believe in the following. If we want to truly know what success looks like, we have to understand one simple fact. We must create a new norm where we think, talk, write, and act in strength-based ways. When we focus on what a person can do, on the dreams they have, on the passions they hold, then we can know what success looks like. Meet Cooper. Cooper is one of the funniest kids I know, and he will steal your heart like nobody's business. The first time I met Cooper, he was self-contained one-hundred percent of his day in special education, and have been since kindergarten. That first day, I watched him use fake money to buy a fake slushie in a pretend Target. And if you do the math, that's an awful lot of the fake slushies. Now, Cooper is included one-hundred percent of his day in a general education setting with all of his eighth-grade peers. The only problem that we're having now is keeping up with how much he knows. And we're doing pretty well. We're leveraging technology and making sure that we have a consistent way for him to communicate, despite the fact that he's mostly nonverbal. Every part of his day looks just like everybody else's, including if he feels like being late for class because he's hanging out with his friends. His list of friends is growing every day, which is especially important for those activities after school and on weekends where they really don't want adults around. Now, meet Gage. Gage has been through more in his twelve young years of life than most of us will ever go through in ours. He has not had a full day of school since first grade, and he's in seventh grade now. This is a picture of when I first met Gage. He asked me two questions. What's your job? And what do I call you? I told him, my job is to make sure you're happy at school, and you can call me anything but late for dinner. This is a picture of Gage last month, where he started in a brand-new school with a team of teachers waiting inside that knew how to think of him in strength-based ways. Before now, they thought that he could only attend fifteen minutes of general ed, that he only could focus for two minutes and thirty seconds at a time, and that he wouldn't sit down doing it. This is a picture of Gage after four hours of doing work in his general education classroom. It's pretty impressive. Next week, we're hoping to add a math class, which until now has been the most frustrating subject for him. He says he's ready. This is a text that I got from Gage after three weeks of success in his new school. He carries himself in a different way. He carries himself in a different way, and he's proud of what he's doing, and he should be. Every single person in this presentation so far has had a life-changing event where someone in their life thought, taught, wrote, or acted in strength-based ways on their behalf. My whole purpose tonight was to come and connect you with this new understanding of strength-based thinking and to show you what success can truly look like. Now, what are you going to do with it? Thank you.
Sorry.
It's okay.
So, the takeaway, hopefully, that you were hearing, and I'm sorry that you didn't have the visual on that, but basically, it was just reiterating the importance of educating our students with disabilities alongside their non-disabled peers, and how important it is to have the programs in public school settings where there is access to inclusion and all of the other rich opportunities that are going on in our public school buildings. So, I just wanted to highlight that and to, again, reiterate my thanks for all of you on the committee that have been so supportive in the expansion of our in-district programs because it is so important for our students to be educated alongside non-disabled peers and within their home community. So, I thank you for that. Highlighting just a little nice perk, I'm actually going to ask you to go to the next, maybe, next slide? Okay, thank you. So, our eighteen-to-twenty-two program was just recognized very recently by the Massachusetts Senate. That we were recognized amongst our neighbors in Carver, Pembroke, Duxbury, Pinelove, Marshfield, Plymouth, and Whitman Hansen. This is in recognition for Civil Lake's Pathways Program for all of their work in supporting individuals with developmental disability transition into the community, and this is signed by the need to see. So, I'm actually going to pass this around so folks can see. And I'm also going to share a brochure that our pathways group put together to highlight all the wonderful work that they've been doing. It is such an amazing program. I couldn't be more pleased and proud of all of the work that our teacher, Laura Courage, and her job coaches, and all of our students are doing within that program. They are out in the community every single day. It's just, it's remarkable. So, thank you for the support, for helping us get that program up and running. And this is a picture of the teacher, Laura Courage, and the students when they were receiving their recognition. It was a nice celebration that Joy and I had the opportunity to go to, it's probably about a month ago now at this point, yeah. But it was, it was just very lovely to have that acknowledgement. And that's it for the presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jim. You know, I always, I always ask myself why I'm a school committee member. It comes back to realizing there's a lot of people in our community who don't understand what their rights are, and, you know, having an advocate in the administration who understands how to meet the needs of our most needy students is very comforting to me as a school committee member.
Okay. It's an honor.
Thank you very much. Joy, superintendent's report, how are you?
I'm cool. A little chilly, actually. So, thank you. Marie, I do just really want to stress, you know, since Marie has been in here, the changes and the programs that we have been able to develop have been truly phenomenal. You know, it has been one of my greatest pleasures to be able to have permanently borrowed Marie from East Bridgewater and to strengthen the programs for our students and staff, and to keep our students where they belong in their home schools. So, I'm, I've just been absolutely thrilled to work with her. Sometimes I think the job of superintendent is, is one of the craziest ones and dragging you in many different directions, but I have to tell you, hers might be equal, but at least a close second. So, it is, it has been, and I, but I did honestly tell her before I saw her that it would be like this, but she didn't believe me. But it has been fantastic working with her. I did, I did, I did. So, I wanted to just, if it's okay, continue talking a little bit about the budget, and I'll deal with the Reno agreement. So, so far, we brought in Steve Calleb, came in and did a presentation about technology, and there's some additional information in your packet from him on technology. Marie has presented on special education, which is another, obviously, important part of our budget-building process. Megan came in today to talk about food services and the impact of that on our budget. And we've begun some of the discussions on building our budget here at Silver Lake. Was that today? Oh, my goodness, it wasn't, no. When did I meet with Jim and do it? Was that? Yeah, it was today.
Yesterday?
Yesterday? I don't remember. Recently.
Wasn't the snow day?
No, it wasn't.
Yeah, it was yesterday.
Yesterday. I'm having a lot of meetings lately. I have no idea. I mostly show up, though. So, we met with Jim and Michaela for a couple of hours, Jill, Marie, and myself. And Christine doesn't usually do the first round of budgets. I spare her from that because we need her to do the, the hard stuff. And just to get a sense of what it is that they're looking for, for their buildings. So, we've had some of the initial conversations, just to share with you where we're at. I don't think this is anything that is new to you. Michaela is very interested in adding an allied health teacher to that program. I think we're all aware of that. We all knew that was coming when we added the program. That is our most popular CTE program. It is astounding, the success that it's had, and it is one that I think you all should feel really proud of. We fought a good fight. It took us a few years to get it in, and boy, were we right. So, great job. So, we're excited about that. So, that's the allied health program. In conversations with Jim and Michaela, we have a point-five adjustment counselor that we put in here at the middle school, hmm, two years ago? I think it was two years ago, that we would love to be able to make full-time. So, again, providing some of those supports to our students, those are the areas that we are really finding, I don't want to say that we're weak, but where I would like to build this up a little bit and to strengthen. The needs are great with many of our students. So, that is really sort of the request, and we're sort of still working through whether it would be completely at the middle school or part of the middle school, part of the high school. But we know we need some additional support for our students. We are working our way through what the impacts will be in terms of the teaching staff. We have only one known retirement at this time. I always am very sad when we lose our veteran teachers. However, it does provide cost savings for us as we're building a budget. So, we have, as I mentioned, Carol Beck, our nurse, is retiring. That is our only known retirement. We do have someone retiring this year. Some of you probably have heard of, you've been active in the schools, and that's Vicki Wright, our middle school librarian. She's retiring in February. So, that's a position that we will be filling now, so that retirement will be built in for next year. Those are the only things that are savings in terms of that. That's a pretty small number to work with, you know, in terms of any areas of savings as we're building the budget. In terms of insurance, I have had a conversation, and we haven't talked with Tommy O'Brien yet, but we, I did have a conversation with Charlie yesterday. I'm dropping off some warrants. He is building in for Halifax seven percent. Charlie is very, very conservative. Even Charlie admits it will be lower. I don't know if Kingston has a number yet. I would anticipate that we will probably be looking at five percent that we would build in. I truly don't think we need those highs, seven percent. But, you know, we'll probably start with a five percent, and as we get more information, we can adjust, and that would be an increase. We have received some information that for Plymouth County retirement, there will be an increase, which will be-
Significant increase.
About sixty.
What they are projecting for an overall increase, I believe, was sixty. Ours is almost double that. So, we're over a hundred, over a hundred and ten thousand.
And that was an unexpected increase. So, we are going to be working our way through. As I think everybody is aware, we're in negotiations for all our contracts. So, there's, there's a tremendous amount of unknowns. So, we're going to be working really hard and very diligently to get the numbers in and clean to the best of our ability for you in January. There are just, there is one other thing I do want to mention. It will not be necessarily in the Silver Lake budget, but I feel extremely strongly about this. I really would like to have a middle school resource officer. I really find it heartbreaking that, and it was interesting at the Halifax Elementary School Committee meeting, there was a parent there who, they, there were some parents interested in adding a teacher, but one of the parents spoke up to the need, which I was glad to hear, that Halifax is the only community that is not supporting having school resource in here. We just signed a warrant tonight. Plington is paying for eight hours a week at the middle school. It has worked very well. I don't find going to town meeting to have it as a separate warrant article to be the most successful way of doing it. Other towns have it built into their police budget, and then you can sort of go with it that way. We can continue to do it whatever. There's a tri-town meeting. I just discovered it was the ninth, not the nineteenth. Thank you, Gordon. But hopefully, at that meeting, maybe we can bring that up and have those discussions again. You know, we have a full-time school resource officer at the high school. Unfortunately, we have definitely needed those services, and we definitely need them at the middle school. On the elementary level, Kingston has got a school resource officer that is four hours at the elementary, four hours at the intermediate. That's been fantastic. In Plington, Davis Smith is our dear officer, and spends, spends a wonderful amount of time in the building. He's more popular than any other, anybody else in the building. If you've ever been to any event, he's the only one all the kids cheer about. That's not trivial. That's not true, but they really like Dana. And in Halifax, I believe that, although I don't believe as much of a presence, but I know that they have worked to make sure that at least a pick-up and drop-off times, there is a police officer there. So, I would love, love to be able to say that we have been able to provide more resources to the middle school. So, I'm hoping that, that's, I don't know if that's a legacy, but that going forward, that you will be more successful. I highly look at that. Hopefully, we can continue those conversations.
Let's see.
Just a quick question. Where does your proposal or request for the nursing coordinator fit in there?
Excellent question. That's going to be in the shared cost budget. Again, because it'll be a position that would go through all of the all districts. So, when we have the next joint meeting, we can discuss that.
We did set up a time for the next joint committee meeting. It's scheduled right now for 6 o'clock on December 17. Who would you like to have?
Oh, I don't know. Would you, you're, you're?
Those are the two.
I'm correct. I second that.
Let's do it at the high school. I think our elementary committees are more used to meeting over there.
Sure, that's fine. Do the high school. So, we haven't sent anything out formally. We just were discussing it earlier. So, Jill and I did a survey of surrounding districts and found out what their, I apologize. I don't actually have it with me because I was planning on bringing it for that. I'm sorry.
I was just asking what time because I have assistant superintendent interviews that night, 6:30.
We can look at schedules. We have a lot of people.
Or we can get it done at 6 o'clock and then, that's on Jill's calendar.
Well, sorry. Oh, so we did a survey of surrounding districts who have nurse leaders. So, we found out of all the people who were at the land superintendent's meeting, how many people had nurse leaders, how many hours they worked. The majority of them are stipends. I believe there are only two districts that have a full-time nurse leader. Almost all of them are stipends, which means they are a full-time nurse and they receive a stipend to do some of those extra things. You know, we can have discussions about what the committee would like. But that's sort of just, we at least have some data.
Yeah, we asked for data. That's, that's good to know.
We've got data for you, Laura. So, we did that. So, I don't know if there's anything else that you would like us to think about for the budget going forward, if there's any other suggestions that you have. Again, we are right now in the beginning processes. So, the way, I have always done the budget and Jill will develop her way going forward. But at this point, she's sort of following the model I've used. Is I have the principals build the budgets. I bring all the pieces in for you to see, just so you can sort of understand how the budget comes together. Christine is doing the personnel, which means all the staff. She's moving them up the steps and lanes and following the path and forward and back and finding out where they all are locating, making sure we have all their needs in place. She takes care of utilities. Bus transportation, you know, we're going out to bid on that. That's obviously going to have a big impact on our, on our budget. She's in, also, we look at insurance numbers to see where that is. You've had the numbers from Marie in terms of the impact on Silver Lake. And we put those numbers together. First round is just what the principals are thinking for that portion that they're responsible for, which again is probably less than 20%, if you think about it. Okay? About 80% of our budget is personnel. So, I mean, that is majority of it. That's what, that's what we are. We are a people-driven business here. People-driven Silver Lake. So, you know, you then add in utilities and you add in bus transportation. There isn't really all that much, which we have wiggle room, which is always the issue when we're told to cut the budget. Because, to be honest with you, as John Creed said, there's only so many paper clips. And I've already cut all the paper clips. We don't use paper clips anymore. We just hold them together with our fingers. So, we, there isn't a lot they can do. But I need to know what the principals are thinking. So, that's round one. Once Christine comes up with her real number, that's when it really gets scary because those are the real big numbers that impact the percentages. We know we're trying to bring forward and plan to bring forward a very fiscally responsible budget. I believe we've always done that. I've tried really hard in my time here to be extremely transparent. Hopefully, I believe people believe I've achieved that. And it is, we are the largest facility in any of the towns. And we employ the most people. We have the largest complex. We have buildings that aren't that old, but unfortunately have had a lot of issues. I believe the towns have been very thankful that we've been able to fund our capital plan for B and D. I know or believe we will be able to do that again fully, at least this year going forward. So, and Christine and I have had talks about sort of the processes for that going forward. When we get to suffer, I'm sure Eric can give a little bit of a presentation while working, excuse me, safer. Didn't say that out loud. Sorry. So, we will talk a little bit about some of the ideas that we have, but we're not at the point of bringing a capital plan forward.
So, I know it's going to be a tough sell, potentially asking for an additional teacher. But the allied health teacher is something we anticipated when we first gave approval to the program. As Joy mentioned, it's been wildly successful. Chris, I don't want to overstep, so feel free to jump in at any point. Elliot shared with us a survey of students who took the overview course where they got to go into each of the programs. And allied health received over 50% of the votes as their favorite program. You know, we have a partnership with Pembroke. If they send their kids here, if they're interested and we have any room available. With this additional allied health teacher, we would be in a great position for the program to be accepted by DESI as a Chapter 74 program, which would bring additional funds per student. Get about $5,000 extra dollars per pupil for a Chapter 74 program over a regular education program. So, adding that allied health teacher in very much real ways would pay for itself in that extra Chapter 74 funding. So, just make sure that's clear when you're, when you're bringing up that added position.
So, I don't, if there's any other feedback you have for me, but we are going full speed ahead. Our meetings have meetings going on at this point. And we are really working very diligently to get all the pieces in place so that we have a great budget going forward to you in January. The last thing, well, two things I have, actually, two other things. So, in your packet is a letter from Fred Dupree, our legal counsel's regarding a regional agreement. So, you may wonder why I'm bringing this forward to you. We have a regional agreement. You all have a copy of it in your original notebook that you got probably. In our regional agreement.
I have a digital copy if anybody wants.
Yeah, at least that's digital, I believe, also, everything. In the regional agreement, it states that every 10 years, you're supposed to reevaluate the census to make sure the numbers haven't changed because it impacts the number of people on the committee and the votes. So, it is something that I realized that we have census coming up, as I believe you all know, 2020. So, it doesn't really necessarily make sense to try to make an official, any sort of official change. However, we went back and looked at the last census and I asked Fred to just give us a legal opinion. This is something that probably 2021, to be honest with you, before the numbers really come out and become available. But you'll want to make sure to have those numbers looked at to make sure that the layout and the makeup of the committee is still what it should be. I believe it won't change. I can imagine it would. But I just wanted you, again, as part of, I don't know, I'm trying to make sure there aren't any rocks that I wasn't aware of that are unturned.
Thank you.
So, anyway, this is just a piece of that. So, that was a terrible sentence. But here is for you to put into your regional agreement. So, you have it. You have a legal opinion. It basically confirms we have the right number of people, good quality people, and the right number of votes on the committee.
Look, it's good because I need to bring this to Duncan. I stopped a couple of weeks ago with Duncan. I'm not kidding. I stopped a couple of weeks ago with Duncan by some older men who said the scuttlebutt was that I had a weighted vote and it wasn't fair. And these are people from Kingston. And it wasn't fair.
Yeah.
And then I got to vote twice because elementary and regional. Yeah, so I'll bring this.
Bring it, I like it. The mean streets of Kingston.
You should tape it to the window like a flyer.
Actually, you know, it's interesting, I think, for people who didn't understand, the voting really is very complex. Yeah, it is something that I don't think people realize because, you know, on the region, Eric does have two votes, but on the union, he has one. Because on the union, all elementary are equal. You know, all nine, so everybody gets one vote. So, Jason has the same power as everybody else there, but on Silver Lake, he's got half the voting.
Half a man.
He's a half voting.
Or I'm just crazy.
Well, that's actually why we did that for Kingston and Halifax is because one of the proposals originally, and this goes way back into the weeds, was to have Plimpton's votes count as half votes. And that just would be hard to recount for a majority of, or depend on demeaning to individuals who are considered to be half a person. We might end up in a situation, if Plimpton's population doesn't grow, that we would be looking at percentages, which could get really confusing. So, hopefully, the census will give us something we can work with in 2021.
Yeah, absolutely. And then the last thing is a substitute pay increase. So, you may remember last year, we went from $75 to $85. As you know, the minimum wage has been going up. It's going up 75 cents a year. By 2023, it will be $15 an hour. So, if you think of our substitutes coming in for a daily rate, they're here for seven hours. Seven times 15 is 105 by that. So, what I've been trying to do is to move us slowly so we're at least not below minimum wage. We actually are, aren't obligated because of who we are as a school system to meet that. But morally, ethically, and in fact, I like the quality of people teaching our children, I would like to recommend, and again, I don't believe I actually need a vote for this, but this is more for your information and I appreciate your support, is going for a daily sub from $85 to $95 for nurses who we struggle mightily to find a nurse to fill in for us. Some of you may remember if you were at the high school, Penny Spenson got on a grand jury in Brockton and we were out of our mind trying to provide coverage at the high school levels. I mean, she was on it for six weeks. It was just absolute torture to go through that. But to go for sub nurses from 125 to 175. Nurses have to have an RN to substitute. It is a legal requirement. When we have to hire a subservus, it is over $300.
Then it's 360 for the day.
Which is what happened in Kingston last spring.
360 dollars a day when you go to a subservus.
So, I know you don't need to vote, but.
I would make the motion to approve those two.
Okay, you have a second. Have you heard the discussion?
I'm just wondering if you have a rough idea of how much that would impact the bottom line.
The nursing piece is minor because that just doesn't happen that frequently. I've been looking at different numbers comparing the past years because as you can, as you've seen in our financials, the substitute line is all over the place. It's up and down. So, I tried to average the years to see where that would land. So, for the whole budget for Silver Lake, it's a $7,500 difference.
Yeah, it's nominal. It is, again, this is where we should be, but we can't make it fall off one year. So, I've been doing sort of $10 a year. Hopefully, you would be willing to do that again next year. I would recommend it. We'll get better quality people who pay a little better.
Just a quick question because I don't know the answer is, do our long-term subs get the same rate?
No.
I was going to say, I hope, it's quite a commitment.
So, if they start the school year on day one, they start bachelor step one.
Okay.
And then if not, on day 21, they get bachelor step one.
So, they do 20 days of per diem and then, okay.
Yep. And then if we have a position that's difficult to fill, I sometimes give it up on day 11.
Yeah, we've seen a couple of those recently.
Yes, I have. So, when Christine is saying the substitutes, and again, remember, that's long-term subs. So, if we have a person who's out for the full year maternity leave, say, or a day here without pay, yeah, they've had a baby in the spring and they wanted to take the whole year off without pay, that sub line item goes through the roof, but the teaching line item will be down. So, it's sort of, you know, it's one of these all year long. But like I said, luckily, Christine and I have had a very good relationship and have been able to work this out. So, I know she will with Jill also.
Any other questions? Follow us in favor?
Thank you. That's all we have.
Thank you. There's nothing under new business and under old business is an item that I brought up a few times, but I passed on because of my constraints and discussion.
Under new business, and I'm not sure where it fits, so just a gender clarification. We had talked a few meetings ago, maybe the last regular meeting we had or before, about the vaping lawsuit. I just don't know where that fit. We were, is it old business?
Actually, I was going to bring that up in the chairman's report. Because I believe a couple of us were lucky enough to have lunch with the Attorney General Laura Healy down at EK during the MASC training conference. And I have some information based on her words. So, if you don't mind us waiting for that. Okay, so, for quite some time, I've been interested in exploring opportunities for our high school students to have dual enrollment opportunities. Usually, public schools in Massachusetts, when you look at dual enrollment, partners with a community college in the area. My understanding was that students could take a course that they're already enrolled in at the high school level in partnership with that community college and at the same time, receive direct college credits from that community college. And my intention was a cost of this for parents who then send their children onto college. In doing further research, talking to someone that we know pretty closely who works for Cape Cod Community College, Cape Cod Community College, Sheila Vaughn, she works with several public schools in the area. She said a lot of the kids who end up taking dual enrollment are actually not kids who are intending to go to college. And a lot of them end up receiving an associate's degree upon graduation from high school, which sets them up better for their futures, but also sometimes shows them that they're actually capable and propels some of them into the college realm who weren't previously considering it. So what I am asking is for permission to continue to investigate these opportunities and to work with Michaela to make sure this is not adding any undue stress to her, just as an examination at this point. Not for implementation next year, but if it works and it makes sense for our students to see how we can roll them into our high school curriculum.
So I'll make a motion that we give permission to continue that research.
Thank you for the wonderful work.
No, no problem.
And if I just may, so this was, you know, it's wonderful to hear, Jason, this was something that I had looked at years ago.
This was actually, I believe, you started this conversation with me. It's really, Joey brought it up.
I've been wanting to do this for a really long time. You do have some students who take courses while in high school, but it isn't a true dual enrollment program, which is more what Jason is talking about. There are surrounding districts who have true dual enrollment programs, and I'd love to share at least some of the information that I continue to gather. I went through a period of iterations and I would recommend, Jason, not having to go through the same ones, only because we don't need to step in the same one twice. But for instance, Syracuse University has coursework that you can take courses online and get graduate credit for them. So there's some dispute about if you take those courses, then you don't take APs. And so which are more accepted? So your enrollment in APs then declines. So it is really an interesting mix to try to figure out the best way of doing it because if you offer this, what will happen is kids will take this as opposed to some of the AP courses. So there's different ways, although some programs, and I think it may be Quincy, although I may be misspeaking, I'd have to go back if I can find my notes, but there's one local college who actually is willing to have the teachers trained to teach on campus the college class while they are in school. So the kids don't have to travel off campus, which is often stumbling block. So there are a lot of options out there, and I would absolutely love to see this coming forward. So that's wonderful. Thank you.
Absolutely. Gordon.
What is, I guess, what is traditionally done? Do the students leave the high school and go to the college?
It depends. There's a lot of iterations.
One of the programs that I've been looking into locally with local community colleges because I was trying to keep things in the pulpit last year, in the public realm, to work with public community colleges. They usually will take contingents of teachers who are willing to enter into the process and they will give them some form of instruction on what their undergraduate course looks like and what the demands of the course should be, and try and match it up with current courses that we do offer, and sometimes allowing them to be AP courses. So that would eliminate to a certain degree some of the decline in AP pursuits, I guess you would say. There's questions sometimes about how that community college gets funded. Sometimes it's funded individually by the students and their families with scholarships to families that are in need. Sometimes it's incorporated into the district's budget. Like Joy said, there's a lot of different iterations. But what a lot of the literature coming out is showing that the cost savings to families is in the tens of thousands if we're able to provide this and students take advantage of it.
I guess, so it's normally our teachers?
It would be our own teachers in most of the programs that I've been looking at, yes.
They're considered almost as a head jump professor.
Okay.
You know, sort of the top campus professor. You know, you have to, there's a lot of levels to this and it is more complex than you might think to look your way through. You know, and there's also, you know, obviously union issues and if anybody's willing to and payment and...
So they would get a stipend from the college in that case?
Possibly. Like I said, there's a lot of options. I don't know that either of us, well, you might know more than I do, but it depends on which path you want to go down. So I think it requires a lot of, you know, a lot of conversations. In Chelsea, Mary Bork in Chelsea set up a program because her population is like 80% ELL students and they were not being successful in school, and she actually has them duly enrolled in college, which has sent the numbers through the roof. I mean, it's just been astounding. You know, when you listen to some of these schools that you would think there's, you know, there's no way possible that they can make this work. And not only have they made it work, it's been phenomenal. So, you know, there's a lot of options and opportunities out there. It's just somebody being willing to invest the time and energy in making it work. And sometimes change is hard, you know, and that's the other piece that would be required to sort of work your way through.
And I guess one of the questions I have would be, you know, who are the students that we want to serve the most with that kind of program? You know, I heard you say that in some places, it's the students who may not planning on going to college anyway, but then, you know, immediately after that, we talked about AP classes, which, you know, generally the students who are taking AP classes are art students that are going to college. So, you know, it seems like, you know, the different paths are going to be different, you know, partially because of who we decided on a target for the program like that.
I think that's part of it.
And I don't know what the answer is.
But I also think that's part of the utilization of the students themselves. That just struck me because that wasn't what I was expecting when I began this journey. And when Sheila brought up that a lot of their partnerships end up working with students who weren't considering college and the fact that these kids who weren't even considering going to college are graduating from high school, so we've retained them, they haven't dropped out, they've succeeded, and they've achieved a college, a high school diploma. They're also walking away with an associate's degree, which shows them they have the capabilities. And if they want to continue on, you know, it's that much easier for them to attain a four-year degree because they're already two years into it. So I think it's really how the student utilizes it. I mean, we wouldn't be looking at degree programs. It would be more of a liberal arts type curriculum as that is what a high school curriculum basically is.
And then the other thing maybe to consider would be, you know, programs that we don't have here. I know a high schooler who goes to a community college to do American Sign Language, and she's going to finish college with an associate's degree in American Sign Language. But then that's not a dual enrollment, that's just her doing that outside of school, but, you know, that's something that, you know, her high school doesn't offer. And, you know, so that's sort of another way to think about it is how can we use it to expand the types of things that are freely accessed to, you know?
There's a lot of possibility.
Yeah, absolutely.
And with the redefinition of foreign languages into world languages, American Sign Language counts for your requirement for graduation.
Yeah, it's been actually a class I've been trying to bring in, well, for about 14 years.
We got it, yeah. Lesley Young and Gordon.
I just want to applaud both of your efforts for going down this path. I think this is, it's past time to do something like this. I think it's great to sort of get on, get on it as it fits to our, to our needs. I have a friend who's a dual enrollment manager out in Colorado and, you know, different perspectives, so I'm happy to serve her up too, just to see what's happening in another part of the country pretty progressively. And then, you know, in addition with the new, well, not the new, but the newer Commonwealth Compact Program, you know, where you go to community college for two years and if you retain a certain grade point average, you're automatically accepted into a four-year school if you chose to do that, which is for some of the, Laura's point, to some of that population that may not have thought they could have obtained a four-year degree or they needed financially to do the two-year in a community college first. I think to give their kids this opportunity is overdue. I think this is fantastic. And our community college systems are really a good bargain and I think they're great. The other thing I would just add to that is, just to think through, clearly you're thinking through, but just an angle on how you, we might execute this, is that one thing, and I mean, whoever has college students around the table, you do and I do, leaving a high school that's a very controlled, structured, restrictive, safe, predictable environment and going into a college environment is a big transition. And it's not just a big transition for kids who have trouble with transitions and I'm sure, you know, Marie's shaking, it's an issue for most kids. And I think that in the way that we can consider to do this where the kids also have the opportunity to leave campus to go get that experience as opposed to just having an option where we have teachers trained and ready to give a sort of college-level course, I think it's almost partly as much about the experience than it is just getting the curriculum at that rigorous level that you might experience in college. So just putting that out there as a plug for, maybe, maybe it's not one or the other, maybe it could be a hybrid.
Well, the research I've done so far has lots of options and lots of paths to go down. But like Joy said, it's a lot of work and I didn't want to continue it without knowing how the committee felt about this idea in general.
It's a great idea.
I just didn't know if you had looked into any dual enrollment programs at vocational schools and how they handled it. Because where we have that student population here as well.
Right.
And if you have somebody that's skilled in a trade and would be able to either start their own business or, you know, look at, look at going into some sort of business for themselves, I think that that would be a great opportunity to pair with a community college as well. Chris brought up the fact that the timing might not work out, but I didn't know if you had looked into any of that as well.
Like I said, this is still a wide open process. We haven't eliminated any potential opportunities. Just wanted to get the feel of the committee, obviously sympathetic as I can't think about it. So I appreciate your input.
So I'll just add from the stem side of things. Don't rule out, or don't necessarily go down one route to say, okay, we're only going to look at teachers coming here and teaching it here, but maybe lots of different options, but also include, you know, engineering, computer science, math and things, you know, there are plenty of kids who are beyond what we offer here even. And it'd be great to be able to challenge them with some more like engineering, computer science, and those sorts of classes outside of it to get credit for those as well. And that, I think, is a huge driving force in also keeping kids within our district. Because remember, what all these words are?
It's an extension of Marie's entire ideal.
Right. You know, so if kids aren't going to BCI or Savarian or a charter school to get that experience, they can get it right here at Silver Lake. It's going to be part of their community.
That'd be a great selling point versus the charter school.
I mean, there's some private schools that are called international postpartum academic schools.
Yep.
And those are also schools we don't talk about very often around this table, but they are schools that we can deal with as well. And being able to provide a dual enrollment opportunity that could encompass many of these different needs that we've identified would absolutely put us in a great position to market ourselves as being able to meet the needs of individual students. Three to 22, Mr. Plaid.
Got it.
So thank you very much for the support. We'll get to the line and I'll give you some updates as my research.
I think we took a moment.
Thank you very much. So moving on to standing committees reports. Is there anybody from the Silver Lake Education Association this evening?
Hello. I'm Liz McFarlane. Hello. Thank you. This has been really interesting. Thank you very much for having us. I'm Liz McFarlane. I'm a special education teacher here at the middle school and I'm also the building rep.
And I am Judy Roth, preschool teacher over at KES, which is a Silver Lake program. And this has been very educational. Yeah, and I'm the building rep, I'm the offsite rep for the handful of people who do teach over in those buildings.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. This has been great. And for me, just so you all know, because I know you work mostly with middle and high school students, you know, I've got the babies. And I love seeing my babies in middle and high school. It's amazing to see the progress, I mean, singing in those plays and whatnot. To think when I had them, they probably couldn't talk or, you know, were in a diaper, most of them. But so we do a lot of, a lot of good work down there and it's just really nice to see all of you people here working as they get older and giving them what they need. And, you know, as far as Liz and I go, we're new to this union business, so is there anything else you need from us? Was there anything else we were supposed to do here?
No, you were perfect. Absolutely perfect. I think for the most part, Jim filled you in on everything that's happening here at the middle school and you know about the winter concerts and the two plays Frozen and Into the Woods or In the Woods or, and then, did you want to?
Well, I guess we just wanted to comment on American Education Week. Tuesday was Parents Day that week and some great high school teachers, Jess McHale, McStow, and Jess Drew, as well as middle school teacher Allison Farah, had parents in to join their classes. And I guess it was a great success.
That's where we're here to report. Thank you.
Well, I want to first yield the floor to Eric. Go ahead, Eric.
I just wanted to comment, I did, my wife and I actually when we came in to see Ms. Cahill's class, our son, one of our sons is in her class. So my wife and I got to come in and Jim's son was in the same class. So we were in there and that was awesome. She put us into little work groups and so I actually sat with Jim and we had to come up with some adjectives, how we would describe this generation. And then all the kids got to, which is their adjectives, you know, it was kind of like the okay boomer thing, you know, like, yeah, you're old, we don't, you know, we don't need to listen to you. But it was pretty interesting, you know, and there were some other parents there as well. And I think basically, kids don't change that much. I mean, there was, Ms. Cahill showed a clip from ancient Greece talking about some older gentleman talking about the younger generation and it sounds like it came right out of, you know, now the kids don't listen, they don't pay attention, they're, you know, not polite, blah, blah, blah. But the general consensus from the parents were that the kids are very bright and are very nice in person. It's online sometimes not, but the kids were saying the same thing about the adults. They're saying they're very nice in person and not nice to each other online. So, you know, the parents and the kids weren't all that different, but it was a great experience and I certainly enjoyed it.
So I'd just like to thank you for your work each and every day, but I know the next 11 days, they're going to have extra energy in the conversation.
A little bit. Because, because last night was Christmas Eve, according to a couple of my kids.
Of course. So I know the next 11 days are going to be taxing and I appreciate you watching our little ones and our middle ones and enjoy your break.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for all that you do for us. We appreciate it.
Administrative review. Nice, CTE. No minutes. Chairman has to report. So the MASC, MASSS joint conference happened down in Hyannis at the beginning of November. Laura was there, did a presentation. Joy and I were there as well. Jill came down. Was anybody else there that I missed? Did you have anything you'd like to share with the committee from?
No, I mean, I wasn't there in my school committee capacity and I wasn't there for too many, for any of the sessions, like I really just went to my presentation. Really. Didn't really, you know.
It's a very, very complimentary Rockspire session, so people were very impressed.
It's a great, it's a great conference. And I think even these people who come, you know, I feel like they always get a lot, even hearing stuff that might be a little bit outside their comfort zone and probably, you know, vice versa, so.
Absolutely. So I had an opportunity with John Prey, my picture taken with the attorney general in Massachusetts, Maureen Hill. She was a basketball player in college and John used to work for the Celtics and he had his Celtics ring with him and of course she wanted to see the ring. So the next thing we knew, I was being pulled into a photo op with John and kind of had it framed and sent it to him for Christmas. But we had a little conversation about the vaping. So Massachusetts is currently pursuing lawsuits, legislation, litigation, you name it, against the vaping industry. As you've seen, it's been the ban and the state recently they passed a complete ban on flavored tobacco products and flavored vaping products. So if need be, I did let the attorney general know that we were interested in potentially signing on to any of the lawsuits against the vaping industry, as we've seen a direct impact on our students at the middle school here in Silver Lake. So I know there's other class action lawsuits going on in other groups, but that we might want to ally ourselves with the Commonwealth if it needs to that point. So, Lesley.
I'm just wondering in prep for that, which, you know, I think it's great, I think the, the bigger need is not necessarily, well, it is to make a point, but the bigger need is to get the resources we need to, that we've been spending to deal with this. So my question is, should it, is it, which of us or the, or the folks in Joy's building and with the other, other buildings that she manages to start collecting some of that information? Because, I mean, we actually have been spending hard costs on dealing with this epidemic, whether it be teachers standing outside a bathroom now, you know, devices in the bathrooms, other educational things, sort of wondering if we need to start creating sort of a dossier of the costs, direct and indirect, that we have incurred and will continue to incur so that there actually are some hard numbers behind it and actual impacts.
Right, I know, I know.
Even if it's a one pager.
I know Michaela and Jim have both been keeping pretty good tabs since this epidemic occurred. They've brought in speakers to talk about it. They've brought us up to speed on some of the restrictions they've had to put on the bathrooms and the staffing they've had to use for that. It was also part of the rationale we used for bringing the school resource officers into our building in a large capacity.
And that's a cost.
So I think we already have some of that data. We might just need to compile it into a document, like you're saying, so we could present it potentially. But I know we've already done a lot of the footwork for that, so.
And then a quick thing I just wanted to point out is I had this very conversation with my 20-year-old when she was home for Thanksgiving break and she wanted to let us know that the kids don't call it vaping. So they have all different names for it and they, it's very specific to the type of use that they're conducting. So just, just as we start to educate ourselves about what this is, I think it's really wise and maybe our student representative can help us at some point get a little bit more educated, but it is not, they don't call it vaping. They call it a bunch of different things.
Right. It's got street names.
Well, not, yeah, I mean, it's just got, yeah, device names.
And also, you know, the devices look very much like a USB drive and we found out a hard way with using our sign of having a vaping product that it really was a USB machine. So.
An IT, actually.
Plug it into a computer, see if it will take it up before you pull off.
Well, I'm also hearing some other things that are, you know, like, she's like, well, it's great that you installed vaping monitors in the bathroom. She's like, the kids will just swallow it. So they're really, you know, I mean, there are all kinds of things I think that education-wise we, we need to understand from that, that generation.
Yeah, no, they're the ones who are most likely to have the inside information.
Sure.
With that, I think those resources matters. And I do think that we've done pretty good work so far trying to address this. I think Jim and Michaela have really been ahead of the curve compared to some of the other districts on the South Shore at least that I know about. You know, there's all Jason, more we can do all the time.
Sure.
So we'll continue to be...
But thanks for putting that plug in with the attorney general. It's a good idea.
Good, good. Okay. So as part of the chairman's report, I also wanted to let you know as your delegate to the MASC resolution vote, that all of the resolutions were passed at the conference and especially wanted to mention resolution number one because I wrote it. and especially wanted to mention Resolution Number One, because I wrote it, and wanted to let you know we're kind of on the hook for it now. None of these are binding laws, these are just the platform that MAS-C will send up to our legislative friends in Beacon Hill. We are calling for the complete banning of expanded polystyrene foam, trademarked as Styrofoam, products from all public school cafeterias in any form by 2022, 2023. This is just with an understanding that some schools have financial restrictions and have already bought content, but we really want to see moving towards reusable and compostable trays. We found that the prices of compostable trays are almost parallel to Styrofoam trays at this point, and the more communities that switch over, obviously, the demand, the price will go down as Massachusetts becomes polystyrene-free. There are three bills that the state hopes currently demand it anyways, so this kind of gives momentum to those legislators up in Beacon Hill who are trying to eliminate expanding polystyrene foam from our ecosystem and from our bloodstream, because believe it or not, if you consume from polystyrene foam, you have some of that product in you right now. And even if you don't, and you consume fish, there's a good chance you have some of it inside of you right now. And the sad fact is, styrene is believed to be a carcinogen, and it's released more readily when we put hot or acidic foods, and some of you might have noticed that Dunkin' Donuts has moved away from polystyrene, and McDonald's did it several years ago, believe it or not, so.
They're laughing at me, because I have a pile of 200 Styrofoam cups in my office.
Collector's item.
That I have, that I'm going to sell soon.
Yeah. If you're going to drink out of it, put the latte cup inside of it first. There's no recycling facilities that will take polystyrene Massachusetts that's been exposed to food, and there's only two facilities in the state that do it anyways. So the many states contaminated with food, they won't recycle it. So it ends up in our landfills, and even though it only takes 1% of the weight of our landfill, it takes up 40% of the space of our landfill. Hopefully, we will see no more Styrofoam in our public schools in the future. So that's it for chairman's report. Legislative agents' report. We passed the education bill up at the state house, we're not going to see much from it here in Silver Lake. The $35 per pupil increment that we're going to see might cover a couple pencils. There are some changes, like I said, when Marie was making a report, to the definition of some reimbursables under circuit breaker and special ed transportation, but that's about it for us.
Jason.
Yes.
Did the enrollment number get included? The actual enrollment number for special needs? Because, because currently, Chapter 70 is 1% of your enrollment.
So it changed, the percentage changed from 1% to 2%, I believe. Don't hold me on that, I need to check the final bill, but they were going to try and the total population of your students who are in special ed from 1 to 2, as we saw from that slide tonight, the reality is we're closer to 14 to 15%.
Yeah, because the, the information's not available to actually use it, right? Because we have to report that, and they have the information, they just don't want to fund that.
That's right. So, thank you for that. Negotiations.
Can I add something to your legislative report, which is kind of, I don't know where else to say it, but I'm going to throw it under here, and Joy actually knows, knows about it, but I just wanted to let the school committee know that I was recently appointed by a joint legislative commission on the status of women as a commissioner, and Joy knows this because she was one of my references.
Congratulations.
So I started as a commissioner like next week. They particularly were interested in my STEM background, I think, I don't know what they asked you, I'm good, I'm good, not, not going to ask you. Not only have I worked on it with toll, but also being on a school committee as well. I think their focus this year is particularly on girls, so girls and STEM, and I'll, I'm probably going to work on the program side, not necessarily the legislative side, though they are doing a lot of work, they have a whole legislative agenda on the status of women in the Commonwealth, so I'd love to be able to share some of that information as it pertains to-
Please.
-that age level that we're working on, so.
No, and I, I'm only teasing, I was honored to be asked to be a reference.
Oh, thank you for doing that.
It was a, it was a, it was a very good conversation.
Thanks.
Negotiations.
Are we going to do executive session? Okay, yeah, so we will discuss that, and we do have a meeting next week.
Great. So PAC, I know Ed's not here, but I'm a member of PAC as well. They're closing down the Hatch Building in Pembroke. They were renting that building for about $2,000 a month from the town of Pembroke. The building's a dump. They're moving their offices.
Jason, where is the-
What?
Where is the Hatch Building?
The Hatch Building is in Pembroke, it's near the library, in the center of town.
Is it the building behind the-
Where the gazebo is, it's right next to the gazebo.
That white building?
Yes. It's like close to the road.
Where the Girls on the Go used to be?
No, it's, it's between that and the little greenery there.
Believe it or not, Pembroke isn't even a member district of Pilgrim Area Collaborative, so they're moving their headquarters-
I did not know that.
-to the academy, which is down at the RMB. It's a beautiful building that they just had purpose-built for their high school and middle school program, for ASB and social emotional students. So that's where their headquarters will be, that's where their monthly meetings will be. They did just send out their annual report. They also shared their audit, their audit showed clean findings. Again, it is our most cost-effective, out-of-district special ed placement for our students, and many of their programs are very, very close to home. If we can't keep them here, the Pilgrim Area Collaborative is often where we send our students. All right. Revolving funds? No, policy. I'm going to make a motion to waive the actual reading of the policies.
Second.
All right, great. Allies in favor?
Aye.
It's everybody, okay. I make a motion to accept as a second reading, IKFDA, ING1, JVJLCD.
Second.
Any discussion? Allies in favor?
Aye.
Awesome, thank you everyone. Revolving funds?
We've just had Megan present, so we, Marie is in charge of the other major revolving funds, so there's only a couple of other small revolving funds, night school is one of them, some of our adult education.
And that's under Elliott, right?
And that's under Elliott, and athletic, I guess it's the other.
Yeah.
That's it. So you have most of the information, so I think we're in pretty shape with that.
All right. So we're on to safety facilities, fees and roads.
So we will be coming to the full committee up in January with our recommendations, but we did evaluate fees, we looked at fees for parking, we want to talk about-
Except you know.
So, really quickly, so right now it's $50 for a parking permit, so we're looking at going up to $100, but if you don't get your license until after January, then it will be parried for the rest of the year, and then that money for those fees will then help cover maintenance and repairing the parking lot, because it's pretty expensive. And we looked at other schools in the area, some are a lot more, we were definitely under the lowest.
Have you thought about categorization?
Yes, we talked about that too.
Like, do you want to go park in JPLs?
We, we did talk about that, and we'll be talking more about that as well, and then, but there's benefits to not doing that.
Sure.
Tardiness?
Hmm.
So when you don't have a reserved spot, the kids are there early, my, one of my kids is here like-
Mine's here at 6:20 every morning, sitting in his car for an hour. It's crazy.
We charge them more than that extra hour.
I'm psyched, when you start serving breakfast, you actually might come in.
And then one of the other things is, we did talk about the flooring and the auditorium in the high school, it's, those large tiles are very damaged, and we need to replace that. Originally, we had that in the 22, 23 timeframe to repair some of that flooring, and we had the scoreboard in the 2021, and we're moving that scoreboard, we're going to swap them. So the scoreboard will go later, the auditorium flooring will go earlier. And just a reminder, I think we talked about this in open session here, scoreboard, Martha's looking at a video scoreboard that's much more expensive, but also looking at trying to get sponsors to pay for it completely through advertising contracts that would be paid off within five years, and then from that sixth year on, would be generating revenue to bring into, potentially into the athletic program to take care of the fields. So it's a revenue generator, so I think, you know, I don't even think it needs to be in the capital plan, because I think it needs to be covered by advertisers.
The correct advertisement.
I'm missing anything?
And Paula wasn't here, she was feeling well.
School start times, we're leaving that as a placeholder to acknowledge it. Again, California has recently made legislative dictates onto their high school times and their middle school times, and Massachusetts is watching, gathering data from their tribe to see how it works out. Treasures report, no, Mike's not here tonight, was there one?
No, it was just that Plickton Mark.
Fantastic. And Union 31, I think we're all quite aware of Union 31's actions recently, we've had several joint meetings in pursuit of a new superintendent of schools to take the reins once Joy retires from our districts, and Joe Prue is our superintendent-elect, I'm proud to bet you all know that. So we have some future dates that are important. The most important to many of our students is holiday vacation, which is from December 23rd to January 1st. Schools will reopen on January 2nd, and we have a school committee meeting on January 9th. I would accept a motion now to enter into executive session only if it's a regular session for the purposes of the German, for the purposes of discussing contract negotiations with the Silver Lake Education Association pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, subsection 21A, Chapter 3, and update on the superintendent-elect contract negotiations.
Second.
It's a roll call, says Chris.
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Yes.